Recording in progress.
That will be used to help inform the process. So we are going to be meeting with our technical working group next week to get their feedback on that, and then that will allow us to refine it before it goes out to the broader public. So that's, that's a big, big step in terms of progress. We also wrapped up the community survey, the first survey that was out, the vision and value survey. So we're going to talk about some of the preliminary results of that today, and that's our primary focus for today's update. I also wanted to let folks know we are gearing up for our next round of meetings, and this will be our first round of public community meetings in June. And so we'll talk about that at the end, just so everybody can kind of get those on their calendar and, and know that that's coming. But before we jump into the survey results, I wanted to have Paul give you a quick update on some of the youth and young adult engagement that he and county staff did last month.
Yeah, thanks. Um, yeah, it was, we saw a few of you when I was up in Park County as part of this effort, and we had that Loop Act meeting as well, but just wanted to give you an update on what we heard from the youth that we met with. And so we met with about thirty-five students, everywhere from seventh grade to some Northwest College students. We were at Matizzi, Cody High School, Powell High School, and Northwest College. And I think some of the key themes that came out was generally some more interest in activities and stores and that sort of thing that young adults are interested in. I thought they had a very keen awareness of growth and sort of the, the benefits and the drawbacks of it. And I think that they were really appreciative of the tight-knit community, the small-town feel, the camaraderie that they had with each other. And they also had a desire to protect agriculture, open space, scenery, wildlife habitat. So a lot of things that we heard from the adults that we've spoken to in Park County. And then talking to them a little bit about whether they were planning on staying in Park County. Most were not. Some were because they were planning on attending college and maybe were interested in moving back. But there was a lot of interest in careers in agriculture and healthcare, and I think, you know, many others, but those are sort of a couple that stood out the most. And so just talking to them a little bit about, you know, what, what would draw them back to Park County? And that was a pretty interesting conversation. I'll hand it back to Darcy.
Great. And for those who are interested, we are in the process of assembling a summary of the feedback we received from that. So like all of the information that we gleaned from our outreach, that will be on the project website in the documents section. So shifting gears and kind of wanted to dig into some of the preliminary survey results. And I say preliminary, this is, there's a lot of information that we gleaned from this initial survey, and there will be a full report that includes all of the open-ended comments and, you know, as well as the you know, numeric charts and information that was gleaned from this survey. So we have started the process of kind of digging into this. We have some initial responses or observations, I guess, in terms of those results, just to kind of keep you informed of how that's progressing, but we still have more work to do, especially on distilling the information by planning area. So what we're going to talk about today primarily focuses on the countywide questions, just gets a little bit into those planning area questions, but that's something we're planning to do and continue to dig into over the coming weeks. And that's really going to be a key part of continuing our discussion with the Loop Act and the rest of the community about policy direction for the individual planning areas. So again, this is a really important piece of feedback, kind of body of feedback that we've gotten, but it's definitely not going to be the only chance that people have to weigh in on these questions and their individual planning areas. So in terms of overall participants, we had just over seven hundred people who responded. We've had questions about, you know, is that a good number or a bad number? You know, what's the right number? And I think for a population you know, of just under thirty thousand people, it's a good representative sample. And I think what we look for in a survey like this is, you know, representation from different geographies, age groups, interest as a starting point. And this really helps us, you know, kind of target our outreach in later phases of the process as well. So overall, we're pleased with, with the participation. Obviously, you know, we could have the entire, everyone in the, in Park County respond. That would have been an ideal scenario, but we were not, you know, this was not a mail-out survey as you had done back in, in the nineties. So this was a self-selecting survey. So overall, we feel confident in the, you know, kind of the range of responses that we've gotten as a, as a step in the process. Then again, we'll have more opportunities for input as we go. Couple notable things, most of the respondents were full-time residents. You know, judging by the time of year we were doing this, that's not too surprising. But we did have, you know, a number of folks who indicated they own land in different planning areas, so different perspectives in different parts of the county. In terms of the geographies represented, we're very pleased to see we had, you know, feedback from all twelve of the planning areas, and you can see obviously where we have our larger population centers. In the Powell and Cody areas, we have higher representation, but even in our lowest, you know, kind of least populated planning areas, we did have some representation. So that was good to see. And then in terms of age, we've definitely had some feedback. Paul talked about the, the youth and young adult engagement that was done, and you know, we'll have probably other opportunities for that down the road, but we were pleased to see that there was, you know, this was not heavily weighted. In one particular area, we had good representation from a variety of age groups, about a fifty-fifty split between kind of over fifty-four and or sorry, under fifty-four and over fifty-five. So that's something we'll be keeping an eye on as well as we go through the process. We also asked folks if they had, kind of where they came from, you know, or did you grow up in Park County? Did you move here from somewhere else? And this map gives us just kind of a, a quick snapshot in terms of kind of where people came from that responded to the survey. We are also looking at migration data in, as part of our state of the county analysis. So we'll probably have a similar map in that document ultimately, just to kind of highlight the different regions that are represented. And I think one thing that struck us is that it's a lot more diverse in terms of, you know, geographic representation, you know, than you might think. And so that was something that was, that was interesting to us. We also asked some additional questions of folks who maybe had left Park County when they were younger or you know, maybe later in life and had since returned to Park County. And so this was a question, you know, thinking about, you know, what Paul mentioned, you know, the, the the tendency and, and, you know, kind of trend of young people leaving the county. And so part of asking this question is just sort of trying to understand what, what does it take to get people to come back to Park County? What draws them back? And, you know, what observations might they have after living in other parts of the country? So most of the folks who responded to this set of questions have been back for quite a while. You can see more than twenty years is, is the kind of the biggest response there. And people had a lot of, a lot of different reasons, I think, in terms of, of, you know, kind of what, what drew them back. And so you can see some of those examples ranging from, you know, kind of, oop, sorry. Just kind of missing, you know, the fact that Park County feels like home, the culture, recreational amenities, or just to be close to family. Other people mentioned the military or other reasons for leaving and coming back. We asked some questions about changes. So people who had left and come back, you know, what, what have you seen that were positive changes in the county and maybe some not so positive changes? So people who responded to these questions highlighted, you know, observations about new industries, economic growth in the area, that there were more recreational opportunities that had been, you know, developed or opened since they left, more shopping, restaurants and amenities, and changes in services. On the flip side, people mentioned the rising cost of living, which is something we've heard pretty consistently from all folks who participated so far. Population growth, you know, people who maybe moved away, came back wanting that small-town feel or, or, you know, kind of feeling the, the changes in the area. But also highlighted that, you know, there, there have been, you know, and can be some resistance to change. And so there, there's definitely some push and pull in the, in the survey responses, I think, particularly the open-ended comments about people who feel that change is really positive for Park County and others who would like to see less change or no change. That's not going to come as a surprise, something that we will continue to kind of you know, talk about as we go through this process. And that push-pull, I think, is really reflected in comments that were sort of right down the middle in, in terms of what we were seeing in the responses about, you know, kind of a changing culture and values, people who really want to see the values of Park County stay pretty consistent as to what they've, they've always been, and others who would like to see it be more open in the future. And so again, something we'll continue to talk about as we go through the process. Just going to give a couple highlights on the planning area issues and opportunities. There's quite a few kind of nuances to these questions, and this is an area where we still have a lot of work to do to try to drill down on the planning area specific observations. But a couple of things that jumped out at us here, you know, the, the, again, push-pull that, you know, there are high-quality businesses and services in the area, but people are really struggling to find and retain employees. That's something that we heard throughout our initial focus groups in March. We're seeing that in some of the data and analysis work that we're doing. So that's going to be one of those challenges that we need to look at further. Otherwise, I think a lot of those things, again, we need to drill down a little bit to understand what's happening in different areas. But overall, people felt, you know, indicate, provided neutral or positive responses in most cases in terms of the overall quality of the economy and the economic indicators in Park County. Regarding new development, this is also an area where we're going to kind of drill down a little bit deeper to see, you know, kind of what, what people are responding positively to or not, less so in their planning areas. We'll talk later about just general observations about growth. But this, these, these questions, we're really trying to get at some of the feedback we heard in our initial focus groups and wanting to understand from a broader set of, of the population, what their perspectives were on these issues. So something we'll talk more about as we go through the process. On a similar note, we are focused right now in the state of the county, looking at utilities, infrastructure, all of the kind of existing conditions in unincorporated Park County. And so this question really gets that public perception of, you know, kind of how development is happening, where it is happening, and it's something that, you know, by and large, the feedback was, you know, people feel like development generally makes sense in the locations that it's been placed in their planning areas. But the open-ended comments highlight, you know, some bigger discussion points that will come up in our next phase of the process. We also asked about housing specifically. We heard a lot about concerns about the, you know, rising cost of housing, the lack of availability of housing, just in terms of overall supply, and the fact that, you know, as prices rise, some of the lower-income kind of, and workforce housing opportunities have really been lost, and people are, you know, in some cases, leaving Park County or needing to work further out or live further out in order to maintain a job in Park County. And so this question really was getting at, you know, the question of, of demand and, you know, what are we, what are we seeing? We've heard a lot about you know, opportunities for short-term rentals and Airbnbs, those types of things, accessory units. But by and large, the feedback was focused on a range of single-family homes as kind of the, you know, the prevalent types of housing people want to see more of. We did see quite a few responses for, you know, kind of larger lot situations. And that's something, there's another question in here where, you know, we, we heard the comment that people are, are moving to Park County or within, that already live here really want elbow room. And, you know, the question is, what, what does that elbow room look like? Is that a one-to-five acre lot? Is that a forty-plus acre lot? And, you know, again, trying to understand some of the demand issues as it retains to where and how the county might grow in the future. Similar kind of, or different spin, I guess, on that, that question of elbow room. And, you know, this was really gearing, geared towards trying to get a sense of, you know, what people really want. We heard concerns early on or just observations in our early conversations about the fact that you know, people may think that they want to own a large property, but then find that maintaining that property and, you know, the, the cost and implications of owning and maintaining a larger property may not be something that they necessarily are prepared for or really understand. And so just trying to get a sense of, you know, kind of what people are thinking about when they think about their situation now and in the future. We also asked questions, kind of leaning towards the, the vision conversation about what people want to see stay the same. This is a ten-to-twenty-year plan. And so we are trying to keep an eye on that long-term view of, you know, if we have this conversation ten, twenty years from now, what are the things that you really want to see still here in Park County and still part of the culture and the, you know, the community? Not surprisingly, these are all things, you know, reflected clearly in the nineteen ninety-eight plan that we're still seeing. The values have not changed fundamentally in terms of what people love about Park County and what they want to see stay the same. Western heritage, open lands, access to recreation and nature, wildlife, sense of community, and then that agricultural heritage are all things that we've heard through our conversations, but again, are also deeply embedded in your current plan. We also asked folks to kind of think about quality of life in general and, you know, what's most important to, to them when they think about what it's like to live in Park County? And, you know, the, the, the top five are kind of, you know, most of those mirror what I just talked about. I think other aspects, property rights, freedom from government overreach, rank tie, and then protecting that Western heritage and sense of place. But otherwise, a lot of parallels to kind of the open lands and public lands, agriculture, and other aspects that we've talked about. So in terms of challenges and opportunities, as we think about the future, some of these, you know, kind of have, have come up in a lot of different conversations already, and, and we're sort of, you know, kind of highlighted again here, property and home prices, not just from a workforce housing standpoint, but that also impacts the ability of you know, existing agricultural producers to, or new agricultural producers to buy land. We heard a lot about that in our early conversations. So not just the cost of housing, but raw land as well. Kind of thinking about the next generation and making sure we have opportunities for those young adults and young families that may otherwise not be able to stay in Park County and want to stay in Park County. Thinking about population and development growth and how that happens. And then again, that, that focus on the changing values and culture and how do we kind of find a balance there in terms of, of new and old perspectives? Opportunities, I think, kind of build on the strengths that people identified in Park County now and, and continue to make the best of, of, of those, protect those things that are important. But also looking at new opportunities related to ag and tourism that might help extend the the window of, of the season for tourism in the county. Thinking about jobs and stability there, access to amenities and other things that improve quality of life. And then last thing, lastly, I will touch on, we had many more questions, but wanted to just kind of end with this one. You know, we asked a question about vision and, you know, thinking about ten to twenty years from now, what are the three words that really stick in your mind in terms of your vision for Park County? You can see from this diagram that growth really pops out in terms of something that people are thinking about. What we really wanted to understand in digging into these comments was, what is it, what does that mean? In terms of, you know, when people talk about growth, you know, what, what's the, the, the qualifier there? And so sustainable, you know, planned growth, controlled growth, you can see all the different iterations of how people described, you know, kind of what growth would be positive for the future of, of Park County. You can also see there are a lot of other values that we've talked about that are highlighted in that vision. And so I think what we will be working towards with this information is using this to help inform the vision and goals for the updated land use plan. And so I mentioned the fact that, you know, there are quite a few parallels to things that are currently in your ninety-eight plan. And so I suspect you're going to see some, some continuation of those. And so we may have the same goal that we had twenty years ago, or similar version of that. The question now as part of this plan will be how can we better work towards, you know, kind of achieving those goals over the next twenty years? So I'm going to stop there on the survey responses. Happy to answer any questions. The only other thing we wanted to touch base on was next steps, but I'll pause there and, and see if we have any questions.
Are there any questions from the commissioner?
Yeah, if I could, I just, Joe Tilden, I've got one quick question. Back when you were talking about the schools, one of the notes was that most of the students were planning on not, on moving away from Park County? And I was just wondering, is that because they don't like Park County or just because they didn't think there was any opportunity here?
I think it was more about the opportunity, and I think people, I think some saw Northwest College as a good opportunity for getting sufficient training. And I think others felt like they needed to go somewhere else to learn, do other things. There were probably some people who, you know, had no interest in moving back. I think a lot of, a lot of the youth that we've, we talked to really appreciated a lot of these good qualities that you see in these other survey results about what makes Park County so special. And we're open to the idea of coming back after going elsewhere, whether for military or college or other training opportunities, that sort of thing.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, none at this time. Darcy, we have about five minutes left before we have a public hearing advertised. So if you have other ideas.
One, one last note, and we'll wrap up. So we will be continuing to work on the interim work products I mentioned over the next month, the state of the county, vision and value survey summary. But main thing I wanted to end on is to let people know that we will be hosting a round of community meetings in June. Those dates are on the project website. We'll be sending out an e-blast within the next day, which has all those dates as a save the date. So we'll have locations in Powell, Matizzi, and Cody this time, and we will also be hosting a virtual option the following week for those who may be out of town or not otherwise able to participate in person. So that's all we have for today.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any further comments or questions while she's, Marion?
This is Marion Morrison. I'm a member of the advisory committee from the Powell-Cody rural area. And my question is, you've done this kind of a study in other areas in the intermountain and agricultural west. How do you see your results coming in so far as being similar or different from other areas, other communities that you've seen in the past?
I had a little bit of trouble hearing, but I think, I, I think I got the gist of it in terms of how to, how do these results compare to other rural, rural communities that we've worked in? I think rural communities have very specific values, and I think we're seeing that, that play out here in terms of, you know, kind of wanting to protect what's unique about those areas. A lot of times it relates to, you know, similar, similar topics that we've talked about today. So I think you know, it's, it's hard to compare. Every place is different, but I think you know, definitely a kind of change is always a big topic of discussion in rural communities and finding the right balance is an important part of a process like this.
Thank you. Thank you, Darcy.
Thank you.
Appreciate the update. We'll talk to you again soon.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joy.
It's Mary. Joy, you're still recording. You should have recording button up on the left side.
Recording stopped.
Next thing on the commissioner's agenda, we have Joy Hill, Planning Director, for the public hearing on One Cornerstone Bear PUD.
So I sent you the staff report and additional materials for this item. Carl and Stacy Bear are the landowners for this particular parcel outside of Powell. They're requesting a change in land use classification from a PUD, which is a planned unit development, to general rural power zoning. I did receive their request, which was attached to the staff report. Property is located right at the intersection of Road Twelve and Highway fourteen A on the northeast corner. This is an approximately, well, the PUD wasn't originally approved for a two-point-six-five acre parcel, but since that time, the land has been split due to the highway expanding or moving to the north. So the standards which apply are the Park County Emergency Development Standards and Regulations from September twenty-seventh, nineteen ninety-four. I'll refer to those as nineteen ninety-four regulations. And the Park County Wyoming two thousand fifteen Development Standards and Regulations adopted in September of two thousand fifteen, and I'll refer to those as the two thousand fifteen regulations. Some definitions from the nineteen ninety-four regulations that are important. PUD is a Planned Unit Development Zoning District. It is a zoning district. Planned Unit Development Agreement, that is an agreement by a developer or applicant with the county which clearly establishes the developer's responsibility regarding project phasing, the establishment or improvement of public and private facilities, and any other mutually agreed to terms and requirements adopted by the county. So back in ninety-five, January thirty-first, the board approved a PUD on a property then owned by Patrick and Sylvia Cole. It was two-point-six-five acres. At that time, the southern portion of the property was the highway right-of-way. The staff report at that time mentioned a use permit for a radio station that was on the property at the time. The board approved the PUD for several retail uses, none of which were established on the property later. The PUD review process was thorough and addressed many aspects of development, such as parcel size, access, parking, utilities, emergency response, et cetera, to determine if the proposal was practical. In October of two thousand, the Culp's deeded the two-point-six-five acre parcel to the Transportation Commission of Wyoming. And presumably that was because the highway was being shifted to the north. And at that time, that consumed approximately two-point-two-five acres of the land, which left this point-four acre triangular portion of the property remaining on the north side of the highway. So in two thousand seventeen, the Transportation Commission deeded that parcel to Carl and Stacy Bear. And then in April of two thousand twenty, we started to notice some, some sheds had appeared on this property without permits. And there was signage from a business at that time. We do have a violation file referenced in the staff report, and that is available in the Planning and Zoning Department. Also in April of two thousand twenty, Carl and Stacy Bear deeded the property to One Cornerstone LLC, which is controlled by Carl and Stacy. In January of two thousand twenty-two, the sheds that were placed on the property have been removed. We had scheduled this PUD for your consideration in February. We had scheduled this PUD for your consideration in February, but the landowner and their attorney had requested rescheduling due to their inability to participate in that hearing. So figure one shows you what the PUD looked like. That was the configuration of the land back when it was approved. Since that time, as you can see in a later drawing, the parcel that remains is a very tiny sort of triangular piece to the, on the northwest corner. There's a legal description and ownership information in here. Again, the property is located immediately northeast of the intersection of US Highway 14A and County Route 12. This is about two miles southwest of Powell. Nearby, most of the land uses are agricultural. To the south of the property, on the opposite side of the highway, there are two properties in use for residential purposes. The property is currently vacant. The topography is relatively flat. It sits at an elevation approximately three to five feet lower than the highway surface. And that's according to an elevation profile generated using Google Earth Pro. So the PUD zoning district, as you may recall, I defined a PUD as a PUD zoning district from the 1994 rules. That is what was enforced at the time of approval of the PUD. So according to Chapter 5 of those regulations, the minimum lot size shall be no less than one acre unless the proposed lot will be served by public central water supply system or a public central sewer disposal system or both. Note that at that time, they did not have public water and public sewer, and nor does the property have those services at this time. The reason this parcel was able to be produced is because of exemption. Because state law says that when land is transferred to a state entity, that it can be outside of subdivision rule. So that's how it resulted. I actually had a lengthy conversation with an individual at YDOT about this very subject. Because we have all of these small parcels of the highway corridors, they're, they're just all over the place. And they basically said that it was legal because they have the right to create highways. And whatever's left over statute says, within two years of the project, that they should dispose of that land. And so that's how these things happen of these corridors. In 1994, the regulations described this area as a moderate intensity development area, which included the unincorporated portion of Park County within three miles of the city of Powell. So at this time, the official zoning map of Park County shows a general rural Powell or GRP zoning district surrounding the property to the north and the west. The PUD takes precedence over the current zoning district, according to our Chapter 4, Section 3BFI of the 2015 regulations. So right now, all land use changes, planned unit developments, special use permits and variances previously approved by the county, pursuant to the land use implementation program back in 1994, shall remain in effect unless converted to a current zoning district pursuant to the following sections. However, land use changes granted for developments which have been abandoned and active or substantially advanced for five years from the effective date of the 2000 zoning resolution are deemed expired unless the recorded documents of approval preclude such expiration. All planned unit developments, special use permits and variances shall remain in effect in accordance with the original terms of approval. So our rule distinguishes these planned unit developments from land use changes and special use permits. It is its own thing. While the 2015 regulations address how a land use change can be converted to a current zoning or be nullified, it does not address how a PUD specifically can be converted to a current zoning district. Nor did the rules provide provisions for nullifying dissolving a PUD agreement. From Chapter 4, Section 3BF, little, two little i's and two, three little i's of the 2015 regulations, to convert to a current zoning district, they address only land use changes and how the, the county can come in and initiate the change of the zoning map to get rid of a land use change, but it doesn't say planned unit development. And further, number three, nullification by landowner. If a landowner wants to take a prior land use change and have it converted to a zoning district, we have a method for doing that. They can file a written request and then we can revise the map that way. But it doesn't address PUDs. So based upon the language provided for nullifying a land use change, which results in a change to the official zoning map in the absence of regulatory guidance specific to PUDs otherwise, we conclude that it would be appropriate to allow a similar process to nullify or dissolve a PUD. However, because a PUD is an agreement which was entered into by the board and the landowner, it was recommended that the decision to nullify or dissolve the agreement and place the property in a current zoning district be made in a public hearing before you. So the GRP zoning district, according to our current rules, allows low and moderate intensity land uses. Lots with onsite septic systems shall have a one acre minimum lot size. Otherwise, no minimum lot sizes are specified. There's a little discussion there about densities. It's just what we all know of the GRP zoning district. Proximity to a municipality, this property is not within a mile of the municipality. We did place notice of public hearing in the Powell Tribune on May 3rd, 2022 and May 10th, 2022, in accordance with Appendix 1 of our regulations. As required, on May 3rd, 2022, a written notice of this public hearing was mailed to the owners of all properties within 660 feet of the property, as shown in the records of the county assessor's office. We did not receive any public comments on this particular application. I've provided you a summary of our findings. I've also provided my recommendation that based upon the findings herein and the fact that the land was never developed as intended by the PUD agreement, recommending nullification or dissolution of the PUD agreement, resulting in the revision of the official zoning map to remove any notation of the PUD and placement of the property in the general rural Powell zoning district. There are a few pictures of the property at the end of the staff report, and I'm open to any questions.
Any questions from commissioners at this time?
Yeah, I've got a just quick question. I have a point of clarification. Now, the only usable land that's left on the original 2.65 acres or whatever it is, it's less than half an acre, right? So if you do go to general rural Powell with a one acre minimum, is there a problem there?
Well, I, I do think there's a problem. There's not a whole lot you can do with 0.4 acres in, in this configuration. If you'll notice, the access to this property is very, very close to the highway access, and that's a problem. Also, it's very difficult if you're going to plan a use on this property to have room for people to come in and turn around or emergency vehicles potentially to come into the property and then still have room for a use. So it is, it is understood that the Bears do intend to use this property. They're, they're hoping to do shed sales on this property. And, and I'll just put it out there, we're not considering that today, but you, you need to be thinking about that because once you start throwing sheds out there, you start depleting the land available for parking and turning around. And then you have trailers coming in to pull these, you know, sheds in and out of the property.
Well, if, if we did go ahead and, and zone a GRP in the future, if they wanted to start a business there or sell it for a home or anything like that, they'd still have to come back up to get Mr. Permission.
Yeah, depending on the use.
Any other questions for the commissioners at this time?
Just one, we've never changed a planned unit development before.
I do not have any information about how to change a planned unit development. So we're kind of, we talked with the county attorney's office to see what would be appropriate in this particular case because we have no guidance in our current rules to do this, so.
So, Senator, with that, explain to me, I, I'm having a little trouble, this is the first one that we've had. I mean, we've been discussing, but, and I know it may not be true to this, but with land use plan moving forward, what is, what was the original goal and is there still a use for a planned unit development?
So.
It's kind of been absorbed by other rules, anything that needs to be done for planned unit development.
So back in the day, the county was zoned, but it was very generic. Everything was either agricultural, residential, commercial, retail, like very generic. Most land was an ag, especially outside of the city limits. So in order to do something other than ag, you had to come before the board to get permission to do so. Some people would come in and just say, hey, I want a land use change. I don't want to be ag anymore. I want to be residential. Or I don't want to be ag anymore. I want to be commercial retail.
But we've kind of changed that through our SGP.
Yeah, we don't have that now.
So moving forward, there may be a lot more of this being converted, possibly even in the land use plan to eliminate PUDs in Park County.
Well, back in 2000, there was an attempt to eliminate the LUCs, which is what I was talking about. But the PUDs are very specific development agreements. People came in with a specific plan. I want a campground. I want a gas station. I want a retail business. And the county agreed, okay, if you want to have that in this area, then your parking has to look like this. Your signs have to be like that. You're only allowed to do ABC. And they were very specific. So now fast forward, if the property is still what it was when the PUD agreement was in place, then you should still honor those terms. But where the land has changed, and this PUD allowed for subdivision. It specifically said that it is intended for this land to be subdivided. But even at that time, there wasn't an allowance to go below an acre.
I guess, I guess, I don't see the need, explain to me the need to even have PUDs anymore. I know there wasn't existing, but we do everything that you can, that you're saying we did back then under an SGP with conditions.
It's, the problem is, it was an agreement. It was approved by the board.
That's right. I, I know for this, but I'm moving forward, I'm just trying to clean things up, make things simpler.
And truly, in the future, we could change SGP's to some other designation that SGP's would still stand.
Anything else at this time?
Yeah, just real quick, if we do, with PUD and we've got a quarter acre piece out there under general Powell, it's going to, it will be grandfathered in to the, for under an acre.
For under an acre. Yeah.
I thought so, just want to clarify.
And the thing is, it doesn't even fall under our non-conforming definition because non-conforming is a parcel as it existed in like 2001. This happened after that. So it was really a weird situation. But I think there are some things that would be appropriate for this property, you know, potentially, which just depends on what that proposal would be.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so I would ask if there's any public comments on this situation.
Chairman O'Grady.
Yes, if you would just state your name, please, for the record.
Mark Thompson, Thompson Law. This is Carl Stacy Bear here, owners of One Cornerstone LLC. Couple of comments. One, we appreciate the consideration. Just a little bit of background. We received notice from the county that there was a potential violation, the shed sale. So that's a third party, that's a tenant leased from Bear's LLC. It started a conversation and that was pretty extensive. And there were meetings and communications going back and forth a lot of last year, trying to understand what was going on and what needed to be done. Ultimately, that resulted in us submitting two applications, trying to change this PUD because it was non-compliant, meaning less than an acre, not due to their fault, it's just a historical problem, to change it to this GRP. That was per the request of a new zoning, which we had no problem pursuing. But that also was coming in conjunction with our requested SGP. And that is filed as of January, same time we filed this. We were hoping to have it considered together, we understand. And Joy wanted to deal with this issue first, I understand, because we have to know what the SGP is applying to. And so, but in, in a good faith effort, they reached the lease with their tenants to remove everything off the property and file the applications, trying to go through the motions to do it properly. Because in a PUD, the allowable uses are, they're compliant with the PUD terms. So they didn't have any reason to know that they weren't. And there were other historical uses on that property. So once it became, they became aware that the county had a different sort of take on it, they tried to get it compliant. So we just wanted to share that they're making this change to help clean up, make everything current, knowing that they'll also be coming back before the commission requesting a special use permit in the future. And of course, we know that there's other considerations that need to be addressed, which we'll look into those further. But wanted to just make a request today, if this was possible. They still have that tenant that's interested in doing his business. And we didn't know if there was any way to have any sort of provisional approval to do one sign in one shed and nothing more on that property. So it'd be limited to that, so they could preserve the tenant pending getting another hearing on the actual special use permit to know something like that was possible. So we're just throwing that out as a way that they could still preserve that relationship, which is important to both parties. We don't feel that there were any adverse impacts to traffic or people, vehicles. It's not like a Walmart parking lot. Somebody comes, it's one vehicle to take down a number or look at a sample shed. And so we wanted to minimize that to one shed and one sign until we could get that forward. Just throwing that out as a request.
Thank you.
Can George respond to that request?
I would have to look under our table of uses to see if that would fit. I, I don't think, I certainly can't, I can't permit that because it's a commercial use.
Well, I guess the question I have, since it's commercial use and they have to come back, go through the SGP process, that's.
Yeah, I mean, I, I wouldn't recommend provisional only because it doesn't fall within our rule. But certainly, you, you have the ability to, to do what you want to do. I just don't know that you have a mechanism to approve a use without going through that process.
Thank you. Are there any other comments for the public portion of the hearing? Hearing none?
Who opposed the public hearing, Madam Chair?
Second.
Thank you. I moved and seconded to close the public hearing. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. It's the pleasure of the board.
Madam Chair, I will move that we follow the recommendations of staff and move the PUD from this property on, for One Cornerstone.
Okay, motion, do I have a second? I moved and seconded to approve and as listed to remove the PUD from the property. Any further discussion?
Yeah, just part of the discussion, I would, you know, thinking about their request, Mr. Thompson's request here, and I would love to do that, I really would. But at this point, I, I wouldn't think it would be appropriate. They should come back and go through the SGP process. Before we move through, I wouldn't, I don't, I don't think we can do it right. I wouldn't feel comfortable even making that recommendation right now without further consultation on, with P&amp;Z and with our council.
Madam Chair, there may be a possibility that they be allowed to place a sign on the property with a building permit. And I can have that special done after this.
The thing that holds her sign is the shed.
I have had this discussion before. This is not new.
There's always a way. Okay, any, we have a motion to approve the request to remove the PUD. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so this portion is taken care of.
Give them a good idea, Lee. Well, you've got to have, it's got to be secured somehow.
Okay. So the SGP process, they've already done the application, so that will be handled very quickly. I mean, moved into the process date-wise as quickly as we can.
They're going to be on the June P&amp;Z menu.
Okay.
I'll talk to them about that.
Okay. All right.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Look at that. Okay. Our next order of business is a public hearing. Let's see, Kim. For Hirschberger, SGP number 235, and we're checking for Mr. Dillman to present that.
You gonna, you gonna go alone today?
No.
One of these days.
He might be.
He might be. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Dillman, we are up.
Thank you. Madam Chair. So this is the public hearing for the Hirschberger special use permit. And the applicant is Samuel Hirschberger. The property is in a GRP zoning district, planning or supporting Powell Rule. We did receive an application for this use on March 10th of this year, including drawings and vicinity map and how this will or not impact neighbors. The applicant requests a permission for this business. He'll build small storage sheds, that all those will be sold offsite. This business operate in existing. This business operate in existing 3,400 square foot building. There'll be some use around that for storage of lumber materials and also a few sheds before they're moved to an offsite location, which is where they'll be sold. This entire use area will be approximately an acre. The applicant did share with us a shop floor plan you had a chance to see. That shows his work area, some lumber storage areas, a place for equipment and a generator location. So we classified this as a cottage industry primarily because of the size and because this bill business will be located where the applicant lives. The location, he has an address of 1054 County Road 3. This is about three and a half miles southeast of Garland. You can see that in figure 3. There is a driveway and this, this business and this use is off of County Road 3. As I mentioned, this is a GRP cottage industry uses are permitted in that zoning district with an S U P. In terms of site characteristics, the land is, is pretty flat. The applicant lives there, so there is a residence. There is this workshop storage building that he works out of. Around this, it's mostly irrigated farmland and there is a gravel drive and some gravel areas around this building where he'll, he'll store things and use that for parking, loading and unloading. In terms of neighboring land use, a lot of the land around this is agricultural. There's some cropland in the vicinity, irrigated cropland, and there's also some exempt parcels along the river. This is just southeast of Powell Course and it's just south of the river. The applicant submitted a site plan. You see that on page 5, figure 4. It shows his building that he'll work out of. It shows a place just south of the building where there will be some shed storage and where they'll be loaded and equipment unloaded and supplies unloaded. And then to the west of his shop building is a shop house where the, the applicant, his family lives. This property is not within a mile of any municipality, so that review is not required. Legal notices were completed. They were in the Powell Tribune. One occurred on May 3rd, one occurred on May 10th. On May 3rd, we sent the notice out to neighbors within 660 feet. Of course, we shared the staff report with you and with the applicant prior to today. Treasurer, Park County Treasurer said that property taxes are paid. Fire District 1 said they can provide fire protection. Mary McKinney did a weed inspection. She will not require a plan. She does recommend best management practices. Game and Fish said they have no wildlife comments. We did get a letter from the Warming Office of State Lands and Investments. They basically said that somebody would need permission to build or do anything or travel across their land. That is not in the works for this use. That should not occur. Public Works, they submitted a comment. They talked about any additional access on the County Road 3 will require work, a right-of-way permit. They will not require a erosion control plan. Madam Chair, we did get a response from the Elk Level Canal District. That was in the form of a letter from Fred Hopkins. He said that he has no problem with this use. He does not believe this use will impact or have any effect on any of their irrigation water. And we didn't notify the Warming Fire Inspector, Nick Hudson, but we didn't get any comments back from him. We've not received any public comments. P and Z reviewed this on April 20th. They recommended approval. They had four conditions. Condition number three you saw was a response from the Elk Water Use Association. Of course, that has now occurred. As I mentioned, the applicant wishes to build small storage sheds for sale to the public. He'll build these as orders are received. Structures will be built onsite. A lot of the building, by understanding, will be inside the shop. And then they'll be transported to another location for display, and that's where the public will see them and purchase them. He said there'll be no other lights. He doesn't believe there'll be any noise or dust disturbances since most of the work will be indoors. A lot of his materials and supplies will be stored indoors. Some will be stored outdoors. He thinks delivery of materials and supplies will be about once every two weeks. Shed deliveries, he's hoping to be twice a week. Power is going to be from a diesel generator. Hours of operation, he's planning on it being five days a week, approximately 7:30 to 5:00 P M. He will have two family members who will be employees and they are residents of the property. So those are his employees. And Madam Chair, the proposed use will not be within 20 feet of any county road right of way. No covenants or proposed are existing. No other lighting will be used for this use. To our knowledge, this property does not have any non-conformities. No nuisances have been reported. Souls are poor. We decided would not be necessary. This shop building is already complete. Access will be from County Road 3. The domestic water for this use, the applicant does have a existing well that I'm, I'm not sure if it's, if there's a hydrant in the shop or not, but I know it serves the house. That's where they're planning to get their domestic water. I mentioned the irrigation district. In terms of parking, you know, we could calculate, we could call this a non-residential use. If we did that, we'd say one parking space for each 400 square feet of floor area. However, our conclusion is this use really requires very little parking. It's essentially just the applicant and his, his family and some area for unloading and loading of supplies and buildings. We feel parking's adequate. Sewage, the applicant, their house is brand new. We just inspected a system about a year ago. So that will serve the applicant and his employees. Power, again, will be a diesel generator. He's not proposing any signs. Solid waste, to the extent any is generated. It'll be, they'll have to comply with our county regulations regarding that being picked up. And a private company obviously can pick that up. This property is in an ag overlay district. So in terms of this use having any impact on area ag practices, our conclusion is those will be minor because most of this work will be done indoors, really no dust, no noise, no light. And as far as ag affecting this use, of course, the applicant is aware of ag in the neighboring properties. He might even, I don't remember, he might even be involved in agriculture practices, but he's aware of ag use in the area. And again, a lot of the ag practices should not affect this use because a lot of the work will be done indoors. We have findings. We recommend conditions. We had some conditions we recommend. Madam Chair, I just noticed, you know, should you choose to approve this, we would recommend condition number three being taken off because we did get a response from the Water Use Association. And we're happy to answer questions if you have any.
Questions from the commissioners?
Um, Kim, on your condition number two, there's two things. The, the finished structure should not be stored on the property for extended periods of time. Is there a definition of extended period of time?
No, Commissioner Livingston.
I, I mean, I would prefer to see something in there and I'm sure the applicant might prefer to see something in there because it depends on, you know, it's, it's subjective.
Yep.
And I would, I would think we would want to see, and I don't know if we want to put something in there, or if we've got the applicant here. Another thing, it's minor, but on second sentence, in condition two, I believe, no should be nor.
We got fixed yesterday.
Oh, yes, yes.
Yeah.
So that, that's my only, my only comment and maybe, maybe, I don't know, does the applicant have an idea of what extended periods of time would be? I mean, one month, five years? I mean, you have an idea of how long you would have a shed sitting there. I'm sorry, Madam Chair, but you would, you have an idea of, you know, you're probably not going to have them sitting there more than two or three months at the.
Well, that would be the longest. Yeah, usually, I'm guessing usually they'll probably be, you know, 30 days, but probably be your normal. I mean, I'm saying there might not be a building sitting there for 60 days or whatever.
Yeah, I would, I don't know, I think a couple of months would be, would be adequate. Great, okay, well, we're in the, we haven't made a decision yet.
My question is, what difference does it make if you, if one shed leaves and another takes its place? So who's to say? I mean, it seems no like.
I wouldn't dive into that.
Well, I'm just saying.
It might be more proven to say no more than four sheds being stored at one time. I don't know. I'm just saying, who's going to know if this shed left and the new one took its place?
That's true.
I don't understand what the extent, I mean, the, the condition to begin with. I mean, it would be more to me, how many sheds do you plan to have sitting there before they're transported or delivered?
That's.
If we're going to change the condition.
I would, I'm guessing maybe it could be as many as 10 or 12.
10 or 12? I don't know where you want to go with this. And, and Madam Chair, our understanding, and you know, this is what I think, if I remember correctly, we talked a little bit about with P and Z. Our understanding was the sheds were to be essentially displayed at another location.
Right, right.
Yeah, but you're right, but when, when the applicant builds them and he wants to build new ones in the shop, he's got to move somehow. Right, and like that one leaves and another one takes its place.
And I think by having that timeframe on there, we know they're all going to be moving. We don't, you know, that just keeps them moving.
That's fine. The applicant has no problem. I, yes, I don't, but.
Um, this is a public hearing, so I would ask for public comments or concerns at this time, if there are any. Please state your name if you're going to say anything, so we have it in the record, please.
Power down there. Due to driving the, almost all time. And ground is actually setting on is very limited farm ground. It's nothing but basically rocks. Corey, it doesn't affect anything other than just being visible by people that drive the road. And for extended period beyond there, you guys have some inventory that is self brought. Or being displayed and moved. And they'll be moving right along. Extended period is going to hurt. Put an extended period in there, prevent it as a long enough period that you can't have inventory.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Hearing none? Entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
They've been seconded to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. What's the pleasure of the board?
Oh, Madam Chair, just a just one comment. You know, thing along the lines of Lloyd was saying, and the way things tend to evolve in the county that we've all seen. You know, I think we should put a limit on the number of sheds that are allowed on the property in a specific time that they can be there. And I've got a quick question for the applicant. What's your, what's your timeline as far as building a shed is concerned? Uh, what's, how long does it normally take?
You say to build a shed?
Yeah.
It depends, I mean.
I mean, I, I realize there are all kinds of.
All kinds of sizes and styles and, and, and I don't know what the normal would be. Probably maybe, I guess, I'd say three a week.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Time for the board.
So Madam Chair, to give him a little leeway, I would, if we're going to change something as far as a timeline, but I would suggest like six months. If we need to put anything at all. To give him some, plenty of leeway. And to be honest with you, this condition, this means irrelevant because who the hell is going to police it? I'm sorry, I just, I don't see the, the need for it at all. If we're going to condition it at all, I think it needs to be, give him some, some leeway there. It's a slow mover sheds to a specific style that maybe doesn't move as fast as others, may sit there for six months.
Right. Okay.
I'll take a stab at it. I mean, you know, these, these conditions are put in there because there's never, never a problem until it becomes a problem. And so I'm going to take a stab at this and just say, I'm going to move to approve the application for a special use permit, striking condition number three, changing condition number two to eliminating no more than 15 finished structures shall be stored on the property for more than six months at a time.
Well, I'll second that. Like you've been very lenient.
Because like I said, it's not a problem until it becomes a problem. And then that's when the policing comes in is someone calls up and says, hey, you know, he's had these sheds sitting out there for, for too damn long and we go back to the condition and say, okay, well, you know, he's either violated the condition or he's within compliance. That's.
Well, the other thing is, we don't know if it's the same shed.
Well, that's.
There's no way to know, so.
I don't want to get too far out in the weeds on this. Mary, I'm getting, getting mad.
And Joe, who's second?
Joe seconded.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to remove condition number three and change condition number two to be, have no more than 15 finished sheds stored for a period of six months at a time. Correct. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thanks. Okay, we'll be back at 10:45.
Yeah.
Right.
We're going to start telling them what color they can be stored out there for a while.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks, Samuel.
Okay.
See you, Tim.
Thank you. Yeah, hurry. Not much of a break.
Yeah. How you doing today?
I'm good. How are you, Joe?
Doing all right.
Good.
Got my back brace off, so I'm a new man.
You got one?
Oh, good. My back brace that I've been having to work.
Oh, it's gone?
No, I, I got it off.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Still hurts, but I can, I'm a little more mobile than I was.
When was surgery?
Uh, surgery was eight weeks ago.
Okay. Long haul. Those are tough. Yeah. Nice rain.
Was.
Yeah, it was.
Any of that we can get right now is helpful. Even if we don't like it during the day.
Right. Yes.
We wrote up Elks Fork on Saturday. It was just kind of a constant drizzle, but it wasn't cold. It's like, you know, you got to get the horses out at some point and get moving and we're getting soaked. It's like, okay, keep going.
Well, on Saturday, I was out, I had to log up my acre ground and replant those, this is going to go. And I started out, but I put my coat on and took it off ten times. Yeah, I'm hot. Now I'm cold now.
Yep.
I know, that's the worst part is just dressing this time of year.
Did you make the one?
There were some goodies in there.
Huh?
I haven't, no. No, they sure look good though.
Are they?
Yeah, I think so.
There's only one left.
Oh. That's probably good. Oh, that's probably good. I gave you the number right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Forty-six.
Yeah, thank you, Colleen.
Thank you.
All right, I'm ready.
Ready, always. On the fly.
I don't wanna, don't wanna.
I know, I know, I know.
I think I'm ready, we'll see. Yeah. You'll let me know. They submitted some nice plans. Two more submitted some nice drawings. And I included, you know, I feel when they submit them, I try to put in as many as I can. I don't, I usually don't.
Yeah, for that to go waste, but. At the same time.
You know, that shed thing is kind of interesting, um, and I, I get what they're saying, and I, they have, I have no problem, they can make their own. But, you know, technically, if, if he starts to explain sheds there and having customers come, it would, it would put them in a different category.
Different category.
Again, you know, when they start changing these. Ours since.
Yeah, I, I remember the lightning storms, but I don't remember the thunder.
That's not what I understand.
You know, we had some dry. Yeah, but I don't remember any, not, not under like.
In fact, I, I don't even, it just occurred to me, I'm not sure how. You know, communicate to the proposed customers.
Curious, has anybody signed up for a regular break from work?
People coming, so can I get, can I get this? Can I have it look like this? Maybe that's, maybe that's how they do it.
In November?
Good.
Unless something. Yeah. What they have to do, well, they'll have to file with the state, since it's not an official party, because it carries. So then they have to have that. Maybe he has to set for so many things to.
That's my understanding.
How about, how about down large?
And I thought.
I heard he was gonna run in with the red district.
I thought I saw. Sheds and a sign. Yeah, so he might, he might be.
I think they're, I think they're. As we, I, we were looking yesterday.
Yeah, and.
From buying your sheds.
Not from.
You took a day off, came on.
Don't tell me that, because I already feel guilty enough. There's so much to do, I did, you know what I mean?
It was probably from. Is what.
Anyway, so I, I took flight off, uh, and then came in Monday and we were looking at it. I wanna say it was a house, isn't that where it was? It was in the house.
The one after this.
It's like eleven twenty or something.
Well, we were done. Rachel back and print that out.
Gotcha.
Maybe not.
You can, if you want, I did print them out, so you could take mine. I'm not sure.
No, excuse me, he was, he had Rachel's sheet, and that's how Rachel got in, when he ran through the center.
Yes.
And so maybe he went over and, I don't know.
I, I remember seeing his name on YO, so I'll have to go look again and see him, I'll send you email.
Well, if he's running for the house, it'd either be Dan or Rachel.
Yeah.
How about you? And, and any competition yet?
No.
That's good.
Hopefully they think I'm doing a good job.
Well, I ran three times and it was highly contested all three times. You gotta get out and campaign.
Yeah, well, so if I, if, if, if the Lord willing and no one runs against me, this will be my third term, so.
Well, I know when you, when you first ran against Jerry, you had to go out and campaign for your part. I, I saw you all over the place. Yeah, you did, when you had your whole family out there wearing your t-shirts.
Yeah, because that year, there was three of us.
This one's faster than, well, the computers that way too.
No, we're late.
We're late. We're too busy eating snacks that somebody brought.
It's a good excuse.
That's why we're late, so I didn't seem so late either.
Nope.
There was, there was, there was.
Okay, our ten forty-five public hearing, um, with Kim Delvin and Jenny, we have. Faith Community Church SUP number two thirty-six, Mr. Delvin.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. So this property is located in the Coting Power Rural Planning Area. The zoning district is GRP. We did receive an application from Faith Community Church, art, their architect Kane Morris. On March tenth of this year, including drawings and, uh, facility drawings, including elevations. And explanation of type of activities and any impacts. And we did get some supplemental application information. We shared that all with you. We did also get a consent to apply letter from church elder, Mr. Anderson. Signing on behalf of the, of the property ownership. The requested action is to approve this SUP with site plan review. It will be the construction of a just over two thousand square foot church facility addition. This addition will contain, I thi- I think it's three classrooms, it'll have bathrooms, a storage area in the basement. And this addition will connect to the existing thirty-eight hundred square foot sanctuary building currently exists. And you did see a three D perspective of the addition in figure one. Section plans are shown in figure two. Elevations are shown in figure three and figure four, and then a floor plan which shows the entire facility. Including the addition and, and existing structure that is in figure five. And this use will operate on an area that's approximately one acre, but the property is almost eleven acres. We've defined this use as major community use, which includes churches and buildings over five thousand square feet. Or more than an acre of land associated with the use. And our conclusion is that this use, um, is just over an acre. Terms of history, faith Lutheran simple subdivision, that was a one lot subdivision approved by the county commissioners in twenty-eleven. And then a partial vacation and amended plan was approved by the commissioners in twenty-twenty. And what they did, you, you might remember, is they moved or they enlarged lot one of the simple from just over four acres. To now it's almost eleven acres. So that was the amended plan, Madam Chair. The location of this property, you can see it in figure six. It has an address of County Road eighteen. It's just on the east side of State Highway two ninety-four. It's about a half mile north of the intersection of Highway fourteen A and Highway two ninety-four. At just about two and a half miles southwest of Brolston. As I mentioned, this is in the GRP zoning district. This use is allowed there provided an SUP is a, excuse me, is approved. Um, Faith Community Church is located on this property. There, um, there's a modest change in elevation. North to south, you can see a topo map in figure seven. This property is just north of the Garland Canal. It's just north of a fairly steep hill. Then at the bottom of the hill, as you know, you've all been on this road. There's fields on both sides of that state highway. Of course, you go further south and it's Highway fourteen A. Land uses around this property are agricultural. There are some residential uses on the south side of fourteen A. South of this property. This land is not within a mile of any municipality, municipal review therefore is not required. Legal notices were in the pouch, one occurred on May third, one occurred on May tenth. Also, we nailed notices out to neighboring property owners on May third. We shared the staff report with the applicant, of course, with all of you, agency referrals, public works responded. They said a erosion control plan is not required. They also are not requiring a geo tech. Geo-technical report or analysis. Park County Fire District one said they can provide fire protection as, as long as they can get access to it. Garland Light and Power currently provides electricity. They can continue to supply this addition. Black Hills Energy, uh, provides gas. They can service the addition. Park County Treasurer said taxes are currently paid. Game and Fish has no wildlife concerns. Heart Mountain Irrigation responded to us. They said this use will not affect any of their irrigation infrastructures or water rights. Weed and pest responded. A long-term weed plan will not be required. Again, Mary recommends that the applicant follow best management practices. Madam Chair, we did reach out to Whiteup. We did not get a response. We don't know this for a fact, but our conclusion is that to this property, the applicant has an appropriate access coming off of the state highway. We don't know that, but we assume that's true. P and Z heard this. On April twentieth and recommended conditions, uh, with conditions, there are only two, just kind of standard conditions. So in terms of compatibility and impacts, again, this will be a church addition. The, the footprint of this addition is just over two thousand square feet. The existing building is about thirty-eight hundred square feet. This is current location of Faith Community Church. It's also in a lot. The applicant stated the occupancy of the existing church building is one eighty-nine. The new addition will have an occupancy of eighty-eight. They talked about attendance on Sundays, and then attendance on other days for meetings. And they talked about the hours of operation, generally speaking, about five hours on Sundays, other meetings, various lengths. Two to three times a week, different days. Facility has one full-time employee, uh, two part-time employees. Of course, none of these are residential employees. Lighting is going to be, for this addition, down-directed and designed to limit light trespass. And we, in our staff report on page eleven, bottom of page eleven, we talked about the lighting. Act, uh, applicant estimates the total facility has seventy total parking stalls. That is way more than sufficient. The existing church has been at this location for nine years. Applicant anticipates no new impacts to any adjacent property. Building setbacks to propose use will not be within twenty feet of a county road right of way. No covenants are proposed or existing. So I believe that existing simple subdivision does not have covenants. Already talked about outdoor lighting. Property has no non-conformities to our knowledge. We've not had any nuisances reported. Uh, so as a report, uh, the, the public works didn't require for the shoes. Uh, public works did request a letter from the project's engineer regarding the foundation design. Um, my understanding is, talking to Kane Morris, the architect, that my understanding is that letter will be shared with public works. Once that design, um, I, I believe once the foundation has been approved, I believe is, is what he said would occur. Access system, State Highway two ninety-four. Domestic water, there isn't existing well. We shared with you a, a water sample or the result from a water sample that was taken in twenty thirteen. No coliform, uh, no lead, TDS of five twenty. Uh, fair, well, a nitrogen level of five milligrams per liter, which is above. The cutoff of ten milligrams per liter. Um, we feel that, we feel the parking is more than sufficient. The septic system, they do have a septic system that's currently sized to serve the use. And the current septic system, Madam Chair, is sized for two hundred individuals. The sanctuary has a maximum capacity of one eighty-nine. The applicant said their average Sunday attendance is one twenty-two. And, um, and we feel like with that maximum sanctuary capacity of one eighty-nine. Our understanding is most of those same individuals will use these classrooms in the addition. So we're comfortable with a septic system sized for two hundred individuals on a maximum on a per day basis. No new signs are proposed. Solid waste, of course, will have to comply with our county regs. And private companies are available to serve that. This property is in an ag overlay district. Again, this use has been there for quite some time. Of course, a lot of this will be services inside buildings. On just certain days or evenings, so we don't anticipate ag uses in the area. Um, affecting this use to any significant extent. And we don't feel like this use is really going to impact any ag operations in the area. We determined, again, because it's just over an acre, that site plan review was necessary, so we did go through those calculations. I will skip everything that I've already mentioned. To our knowledge, there'll be no hazardous substances stored or produced on the site or disposed of on the site. This use will not impact any lakes, reservoirs, or streams. This use is not expected to impact any federal wetlands. This use was not expected to impact air quality. And, um, Madam Chair, in terms of special site plan standards, given the planning area where this use is located. That review is not required. We do have some findings. We just, we recommend approval. And we just have two general conditions that you might think about, and we're happy to answer questions if you have any.
Any questions at this time from the commissioners? Hey, this is a public hearing, so I would ask for any public comment. There's any at this time? Okay, so moved and seconded to close the public hearing. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, I move we approve.
We need to vote on closing the public hearing first.
I gotta, I gotta head on myself.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please?
I'm out, Madam Chair, I move we approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the use as presented. Any further discussion? Any none, all those in favor?
Aye.
You wanna post? Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
So Jennifer, when, at what point do you get, have your baby?
Never. I just thought I'd answer for you.
At which time it becomes absolutely necessary.
Thank you. Okay, our next order of business is Kristen Yoder with the Matiti Visitor Center on one of the special funding requests. I don't know if she's here yet or not. Hi.
Hello.
How are you?
I'm well, how are you today?
Good, thanks. I guess we're ready for you at any time.
My name's Kristen. I'm the director of Matiti Visitor Center, and we're here to talk about our fiscal year, I guess, twenty-three grant. Today, um. In the information that we send over, usually we just send, you know, the pre, you know, fill out form and, and a budget. Um, but I did include this time our strategic tourism plan for the next five years. Um, the Matiti Visitor Center and various different labels has been around for thirty-seven years. And, um, never before have we really sat down and strategized what we're gonna do for the community, how we're gonna pull tourists into Matiti. And so this, uh, winter, myself and my board sat down and kind of came up with some, some core things that we wanted to do. And wanted to accomplish in the next five years that would help bring in, um, a greater amount of tourists, tourist staying for extra days. Um, doing more activities, um, and so I hope that everyone had a chance to review that. Because I think that if you have, you can, um, understand that why we asked for the amount of grant that we did.
Yes. Scott, your comments on what we have reviewed here?
Madam Chair, as a visitor center liaison for the commissioners, I've been over to a couple meetings. I basically request. Have me, get ahold of me if you, if there's something. have me, get ahold of me if there's something that you tire of need. Other than that, it's such a long ways from Clark over. They do keep me involved in monthly updates on emails as to what they do. And they do a lot for a little community like that. I mean, you always have something going.
Always.
So anyway, I appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
And I think it's exciting to get the new building, you know, as things get moving forward.
Being downtown, like right there on, on State Street, Main Street, whatever you want to call it. We've only been there since March. March and April are usually our slowest months in, in the town of Matiti in general, but especially in the Visitor Center. And it has made 100% difference already. We had 300 people come in in March, like, which is just unheard of. And then April, same thing. And then since we did our, we did a grand reopening, because we rebranded into Discover Matiti in order to kind of just pull in not only our visitors, but also our constituents. And month of May, we're already at 700 people coming in, which is, I've been here almost three years, I've never seen them. The door has never swung open and shut that much. So it has definitely made a difference.
Good. Okay, so we're looking at a little bit of an increase in your request from the last couple of years. And we'll be looking at these all on June 20 and 21 to kind of make a decision toward the final budget. But that's where we're at. Is there anything else? All good? Okay.
All right, well, thank you all for your time. Have a great rest of the day.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'll give Rebecca a few minutes. Molly, were you able to get those letters printed off, the letters of support and stuff that we're gonna? You know, I don't have an answer for that.
You're on, you're up.
Running early?
Well, machine or chairs.
Here.
Let's see what I can do to get you off schedule.
Thanks, Rebecca. Appreciate that.
Okay.
Well, good morning, Commissioners.
So good to see you. It's a nice shiny day out there. It's a beautiful drive over. I love driving over here. It's always reminds me why I live here, you know? We have the gorgeous mountains and ag fields and all that kind of good stuff. And so essentially, the entire way, you know, I'm on the phone trying to plan ag tours, helping agricultural businesses. And I'm reminded why it's so important to have a person in my position or really in the Economic Development Chamber Visitor Center position for Park County. A lot of times, we are the first line of communication. You know, if a, if a business is needing an employee and they're wanting to know local resources, they contact us. You know, who, who do you have in such and such position? That's really super specific. And we have our network and we reach out to everybody from local university, college, workforce services, so on and so forth. We talk a lot to businesses and we ask them what their pinch points are. We have these business over breakfast, they happen twice a month generally. And they're small format kind of groups. And within that format, businesses are pretty frank about what it is that they're looking for and what they need. And, you know, honestly, it's always the same, it's the same story. They say the same thing time and time again. They talk about workforce, they talk about housing needs. They talk about logistics. So that's a big thing, you know, especially when gas prices are as, as, you know, high as they are now. Sometimes it's just not cost, you know, effective or feasible to ship your products out by truck. And obviously, we have a rail line that goes out and back. But to tell you the truth, we need to expand that rail line. We need, you know, more rail spurs. We need warehouses attached to those rail spurs. And we have to get the cost of shipping that product back and forth down so that they have more options. We also need to start looking at air service. You know, how, how viable is, you know, shipping cargo in and out via, via air? So when we're talking about agriculture and expanding our value-added ag businesses, these are the kinds of conversations that Pep has, you know, with, with businesses. With, when we're talking about travel and tourism, you know, a lot of times they're talking about the same type of thing. You know, workforce is always high on the list of issues that, you know, people have, especially this time of year. I feel like they're, you know, with the Yellowstone having the 150th birthday, it's, it's very good. But the businesses are definitely going to feel that pinch. And, you know, we're trying to think about workforce creatively because honestly, you know, we don't have housing, we don't have housing for the workforce to come and move into. So what does that mean? And we're looking at, you know, partnering better with the college, potentially creating programs with the high schools and seeing what we can do and keeping those high school kids working. Another big thing that we hear about workforce is, you know, when kids come out of college, they've never, they've not had a job. And it's really important to have that summer, those summer jobs, right? To kind of understand what it means to be on time, understand what it means to return a good email, understand what it means to pick up the phone or talk interface with the customer, so on and so forth. All those things are really valuable life skills. And so kind of we're, we're looking at those programs too. But essentially, when it boils down to what we really do is we listen to the community. They tell us what they need, the business community tells us what they need, the community at large is pretty vocal too. And they'll say what they need as well, what they're looking for, what they're looking for as far as quality of life goes. And we translate what the community tells us into programs and, you know, create some action with those programs. And so the, the request, it had our 2020, 2021 annual report. And in the middle of the annual report, it talks about the 10 programs that we spent a lot of time on. And these were all really identified by stakeholders in the community or community members of businesses. And then we translate that into action items. So another good example would be Outdoor Recreation, Dossie and, or Commissioner Chairman, sorry, Chairwoman. You're going through all the titles. Chairwoman and Commissioner Ciel, you know, you attended a lot of those Park County Outdoor Rec Collaborative Meetings. And, you know, change doesn't happen fast. We all know that this is true. First, you have to make all of the stakeholders and agencies aware that maybe something needs to be changed, right? Or something needs to be added to. Then you get your, your community members and your businesses and your organizations together so that they kind of echo the same type of thing, right? And then, then we can start building. And so we've just really started the building process. It's taken over a year of meetings to get here. And, but the, the state with their, with their help and kind of forming and facilitating those, those, that outdoor collaborative with basically Pep's input. So we were the people who asked the state to start the collaborative here. We were also the people who invited everyone initially. And then we're also the people who kind of narrowed down the list or provide extra local help when the state needs it. So our collaborative in Park County is enormous. Most of them are only like 10, 15 members. We have way over that. In fact, we had 80 people interested. We had to narrow it down to 50 to even sign the charter. So that's, that's kind of where we, that's our wheelhouse. We know the players and the people and we get them excited and get them involved in the, in the project. And now we're working on a boat launch. So John Wetzel, Mayor Wetzel and Powell's on our steering committee. And this is really his passion project. So this is how you're going to see this come to life. You have a bunch of people, we've done something, we're going to build something, the boat launch. And then what we're going to do on top of that is, okay, now we'll have businesses, industries, organizations using that asset so that we can grow additional businesses, additional jobs and basically provide a better quality of life. So that you have a better workforce, better talent pool again, you know, coming in and, and investing in being a community member and, and living here. So that's kind of how we stepped through a program. We're also the intermediary of the Maricor Vista Program. You've heard me talk about that. Our vistas are doing things like creating traveling trunks for the home center museums so that people can understand local agriculture more at the school and community level. They're doing things like creating virtual programs for the Heart Mountain Interpretive Center so that you don't necessarily have to be within Park County to understand that story and how important it is. They're working with Forward Cody to create the Elk Plaza and the coworking space, which is so huge for, for Cody, so on and so forth. So we have 10 vistas, nine positions open. I'm currently recruiting for an outdoor rec planner, which I personally think is amazing. They're just going to basically hike, hike trails and tell us, you know, how accessible it was. So again, that's just another way to bring talent into the county, build capacity for these organizations and really get some projects moving and started. Of course, we are the entity who advertises and promotes PAL for basically the PAL Valley, Clark's Garland. That's our, that's our region, our area. So we get that money to, to man the Visitor Center from Park County Travel Council. But we are the sole entity essentially that advertises anything to do in the PAL Valley. And there's a huge crossover between advertising our assets to travel and tourism, to get that, those tax collections, which everybody loves here, right? But also with that, you're advertising, that, that translates to getting a better workforce, advertising to businesses. And why would they want to relocate here? So we're, we're really the entity that does that for the PAL Valley. And of course, we work on recruitment and relocation for getting businesses and to, to move to, to the PAL Valley and really building industries. So we work a lot in building industries where we have partners that work one-on-one with businesses like SBDC and now Impact 307 is coming in. There's a lot of agencies that sit shoulder to shoulder with businesses and help them write a business plan. There's no entity outside of us for the PAL Valley that actually creates industries. So, or creates, expands on those industries so that businesses can, can come in and thrive. And so we're, we're not, we do not provide a duplicate service in that way. If, if a business needs us to sit shoulder to shoulder with them, we certainly will and we definitely do that. But because there's so many other entities that already do that, we're the folks that come in and say, okay, what do we, this is, this is the PAL Valley or this is Park County. What do we need to focus on to, for business and industry to thrive? And then we go and we do that. So we obviously really appreciate your support. Your dollars are huge. But even more than that, honestly, you're, when you show up to the meetings and you're engaged and you're helpful and, you know, you connect us to people at the state level when that, those connections need to be made. That makes our job just more enjoyable, number one, and easier. And it feels more like a team. So I really appreciate not only your monetary support, but your mental and emotional support too.
Thank you.
Can I answer any questions?
If you stop moving, do you fall over? I bet your planning book is just huge.
You would not want to know what my, this week looks like for me.
Well, we appreciate you being on the land use plan in our core group.
It's important.
Yeah, I couldn't keep up with you.
You do a lot too, Commissioner Mangle. Do a lot too, all the Commissioners do. We really appreciate all your time and effort. I mean, I know that you're on a million committees as well, so.
Any other questions or comments?
No.
Request?
One, one final thought is we are asking for 15,000. If you look at the amount that we have been given in the past, it's really pretty in line with what you had always been given in the past. And it, yeah, so it's, it's, it's just a very small uptick. And all that money goes straight into working on the programs, you know, that is, that are outlined into our annual report. So thank you.
Well, without any other questions, thank you for coming over and talking to us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Are you on time?
We're good, no, you're good. Yep, we're still on time.
Run ahead.
Seems to be a theme everybody knows, sort of an uptick.
I'm sure Kim will be in in a minute or two, so. You don't have to. Oh, I see.
The last outdoor rec meeting.
Yeah, I couldn't.
You missed, yeah, you were in touchless. But I'm glad they did something because I was.
You were pissed at me, but other than that.
Yeah, I was. Because I thought, all right, I'm, I'm not going to remember one of these if they don't do so. You sit around.
Well, we knew we had that June deadline and I know that that's what they were working toward, but they gave it a better plan. Worked out good.
Well, at least you had something.
Yeah. Molly, your folder's done with just chair.
Most got caught with a fishing scam.
Did you?
From Park County.
From Park County?
U.S. IT Department. Like seven of them, they got a big thumbs up.
That's right, and they don't have to take the test again. Yet. Yet.
I think we should have some kind of rewards.
Candy? Candy bar for?
Let us off the next time we mess it up. So we don't have to train.
Kind of hate to get caught again.
Commissioners exempt?
This is your opportunity, she's just sitting around on her own.
Next time. Next time.
Hold you to it.
Pretty early. This one is not a public hearing.
Correct. Yes, yeah, Madam Chair.
So the next thing on our agenda is Kim Telvin with Park County Planning and Zoning, Adelina Estates, Minor Subdivision Number Fifty-Five, Final Plat and SIA.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The applicant for this project for the subdivision is every cut above. This property is in the GR5 zoning district. Planning area is Cody Local. We did, this is final plat, as you know, we did receive the application for that in October of last year. Including payment in the final plat. Then we got a revised final plat, which we shared with you on March fifteenth of this year. So the applicant requests approval of this final plat. It'll be, it'll be five lots. And I apologize, in the, in the staff report, we did mention that Lot One will be twenty-eight point two eight. But then Lot Two, that, and this has changed. It changed some time ago. I, I think maybe we just forgot to update it in the staff report. Lot Two is planning to be three acres. Lots Three, Four, and Five will each be one point six eight acres. And we did receive the draft subdivision improvements agreement on April twenty-seventh of this year. Attorney, County Attorney's Office requested some changes. They looked at it, grant approval on that same day. And we'd also, there was a draft ESCO agreement that has been approved by the County Attorney's Office, requires the board's approval. I assume along with the subdivision improvements agreement. Bank selection and the applicant, the applicant requests Pinnacle Bank as their bank. Madam Chair, again, so you saw the final plat that is on page three. It's figure one. This property, I know you've seen this subdivision before. The location, it's shown in figure two. And it's approximately six and a half miles northeast of Cody. It's just about an eighth of a mile west of Highway fourteen A, and it's just west of County Road Twenty. As I mentioned, this is in GR5. The applicant is planning to use lot size averaging. And to, to use lot size averaging, the, really the conditions are no lots or parcels. In this case, the applicant is using all lots to determine lot size averaging. So the conditions are no lot shall be created smaller than the special minimum lot size. And in GR5, that's, that special minimum lot size is one acre. So no lot can be less than one acre in size, which that condition the applicant has met. The other condition for lot size averaging is the average size of lots shall be equal or exceed the minimum lot size for the zoning district. Of course, this is GR5, so that average needs to be at least five acres. The applicant is planning to create five lots. This property, I believe, currently is thirty-six acres. So he's met that average lot size being at least five acres. I think it's seven something, if I remember correctly. So he's met the conditions for lot size averaging, Madam Chairman. In terms of neighboring land use, you can see in figure four on page six, that much of this property is surrounded by agricultural uses. There is some residential uses just directly to the north of this property. In terms of site characteristics, we have a topo map on, or in figure five, and there, there is some elevation change. I think we said that it was, the property was relatively level with a gentle slope as you move from southwest to north, from southwest to northeast. Property is currently vacant. Currently, it's irrigated farmland. This property is not within a mile of any municipality. So that review is not required. Public hearing is not required, of course, for final plats. We had at times, of course, not, not today, not anything that you haven't heard, but in, in other, I think probably when you reviewed the sketch plan, there were some verbal and public comments. County commissioners reviewed the sketch plan on September twentieth of last year, Resolution Twenty Twenty-One sixty-eight. Conditions, Madam Chair. One was the applicant shall comply with recommendations from Public Works. That condition has been met. Another condition was, and, and Ben Chair, these were York, the board's conditions from sketch plan, water analysis, revealing safe drinking water, again, within a half mile from a, a well. That condition has been met. We did get a water test result. No coliform re-colie. Another condition was approved long-term noxious weed management plan. That condition has been met. Another condition was review and recommendations on the Heart Mountain Irrigation District. That's been met. Another one was a draft subdivision improvements agreement and not commence any layout or construction before that has been approved. Of course, we did get a draft subdivision improvements agreement. You had a chance to see that. It went in a draft ESCO agreement, and I believe that the, the improvements basically related to utilities. Also, I think roads and possibly irrigation systems. Those were your conditions from sketch plan, Madam Chair. Plat Review Committee. They met on November thirtieth. There are some correction, changes that were suggested, required. And like I said, we did get that final revised plat back on March fifteenth. So we do have, on page nine of our staff report, we have final plat specifications. We have supporting documents. We have that a subdivision improvements agreement is required. So all those things have been, have been addressed. We have some findings and we recommend approval of the sub, both the subdivision improvements agreement and the final plat. And we also recommend the selection of Pinnacle Bank for the ESCO agreement. And we recommend that you approve the ESCO agreement. And we have some recommended conditions for you to consider. We're happy to answer questions if you have any. And, and Madam Chair, I mean, should you choose to, to move forward with this approval? Again, we feel it can be one resolution. I think our, our recommendation is a, a separate vote for SIA and I think the ESCO with that. Not, or separate?
I think it's the ESCO is by itself.
Okay, so. She should have. So we recommend the SIA being, that being a vote, ESCO being a vote.
Oh, just the, sorry, the, I think the final plat and the SIA together.
Okay.
And then the ESCO.
Okay.
Separate.
Resolution or vote also?
Resolution, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Can you tell us what we're supposed to do?
Three motions would make sense with what we have to do.
Yeah, three motions.
Which one hurt?
The plat is usually first and then the SIA.
Madam Chair, why are these not part of the condition? I mean, they're already part of the condition, so I don't understand what they're making more difficult.
Why they want them separately, I'm not positive. I just know that Planner Hill has said that in the past to have them. Is there any other questions regarding? Are there any other questions regarding the presentation on the final plat, SIA, or the ESCO agreement as provided?
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion. We approve the final plat.
Second.
And the motion to approve the final plat as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Madam Chair, I move we approve the subdivision improvement agreement with Adelina Estates.
Moved and seconded to approve the subdivision improvement agreement, Adeline. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Madam Chair, I'll move we approve the ESCO agreement.
Second.
It moved and seconded to approve the ESCO agreement as described. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I think we're done.
And so my understanding is we will have the final plat and ESCO on one resolution. Final plat and SIA on one resolution. And then the ESCO on a separate resolution.
Okay, that's fine. However, you need to draw it up for.
Okay, all right, thank you.
We know we approved all three.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you, Colleen. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
You need to speak up, Jonathan.
I'll give him the microphone.
He said he let Scott know where.
He's outside.
Thanks.
Thank you, Justin.
Eric Stewart.
There he is.
I didn't say trader, I said player.
That's right. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Board, so what we have is the Correctional Healthcare Annual Update for two thousand twenty-two.
Scott, I'm going to interrupt you just enough to have you use the mic because they have trouble hearing what we're saying.
Okay, so watch what I say.
Well, that's true.
Okay, gotcha. It's for two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three for inmate healthcare services. I'm really surprised at how little they went up. Basically, it went up to a four percent increase. Went up ten thousand, three seventy-seven, twelve. I might add too, as just kind of a side note, our in-house nurse this year got a, a, a pretty high award from the healthcare, that agency, that, that company for all of her documentation, hard work, training that she's provided to our staff, you know, no costs and so forth. So we're pretty impressed with that too, that she got that award from the company for outstanding, small facility around the country. So we're happy with that. So I guess what my recommendation would be, and we've discussed this every year, it's, it's kind of a tough pill to swallow, the cost, but the amount of money it saves us, I know, we're hoping the cost, we may see it go down because I know Big Horn County is looking and getting on board. So the more counties we can get on board in this area, the more we can share nurses and hopefully that cost will at least stay where it's at, or I don't see it decreasing. But I think we've proven over the years of, of how valuable it is having that healthcare facility that in-house, because they bring their own attorneys, they bring their own documentation. Every time we get a grievance filed or a lawsuit, we just turn it over to them. They take care of it. We're out of the picture. Because they're contract, so it gets the county out of that. And nothing has changed in terms of the contract other than the price.
So what we're looking at here is a total price. If we have this, if we approve this, the effective date is July one, two thousand twenty-two. And the total price for annual would be two, two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred and four dollars and seventy-six cents.
Madam Chair, I move to approve and allow the Chair to sign.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the updated contract with Correctional Healthcare Companies as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, we're done. Lunch is downstairs today.
Oh, that's right.
So tonight I'll pick where we're going.
You can pick where we're going. I was gonna, I was gonna suggest the wildcat room. I get all kinds of time.
That's true.
Man, I might be taking a nap.
Yeah, we could do that.
Wonder if I got any, any errands out there. I'm sure I do.
Well, so, and, and I know it's over.
I know it's over, but explain.
It is 1:15. We convene from after lunch. And the next thing on the county commissioner's agenda is the subject of the hand counting ballots. This subject came up in a request from Mr. Tidwell on April 5th. And the county commissioners determined at that time that we needed a review of this by the county attorney's office to see what the county's ability was to answer any of these questions. So with that, I am going to read the report from the county attorney's office and then we'll see if we still have time after that for any further discussion. Okay, regarding the opinion on manual ballot tabulation.
No promises.
No. When requested by any county officer, a county attorney shall provide a legal opinion in writing upon all questions of law related to duties of such office. The Park County Board of County Commissioners has requested a legal opinion on the legality regarding a group's proposal to initiate a hand count of ballots within Park County during the 2022 election process. To that end, the Park County Attorney's Office researched whether the Park County Commissioners, the Park County Clerk, or Park County in general may legally authorize manual tabulation of official voter ballots by them or anyone else. Pursuant to Wyoming law, Park County, like all other counties, is mandated to utilize ballots that have been designed to be tabulated via counting machine and voting equipment. Wyoming State Statute 2214 reads in part, "For ballots designed to be counted by machine, each individual vote shall be determined by the voting equipment and shall not be determined subjectively by human tabulation, except when the intent of the voter is unmistakable, but the ballot was received in such damaged, soiled, or other condition that it is rejected by the machine." At present and throughout Wyoming, all ballots are designed to be counted by machine, thereby invoking the statute. The statute defines the law and the law simply cannot be ignored by local officials. Voting procedures in the state of Wyoming are set by the Wyoming Legislature, not local officials. 193 pages of Wyoming statutes are dedicated solely to election type activity to ensure uniformity. The state has unified voting procedures for a reason. The legislature clearly understands that if all 23 counties had their own voting and tabulation procedures, uniformity could be lost and voter skepticism would surely ensue. Manual tabulation of ballots could also elicit the natural subjectivity of persons counting the ballots, the very thing the legislature intended to eliminate by the enactment of Wyoming Statute 2214-114. Furthermore, Article 6, Section 11 of the Wyoming Constitution states that all voters shall be guaranteed absolute privacy in the preparation of their ballots and the secrecy of the ballot shall be made compulsory. Handing ballots over to any individual or group outside of existing election laws would violate the constitutional provision. Wyoming Statute 2214-107 also mandates that unofficial voting tabulations shall be transmitted immediately to the Secretary of State. Expanding upon this statute, Chapter 15, Section 4B of the Secretary of State's Administrative Rules on Election Procedures states that results shall be submitted to the Secretary of State no later than 10:30 p.m. on election night. Voting machines allow timely tabulation, whereas hand counting could take days. Waiting for a hand count result would not be in conformity with either this statute or this rule. Federal law also mandates ballots and other records related to elections be kept by the Park County Clerk in a preserved manner for 22 months following an election. 52 U.S.C. and 20701. Failure to do so is punishable as a high misdemeanor. Given this preservation law and absent a court order, Park County cannot turn over ballots to any individual or group of people to be counted manually. It is the responsibility of the Wyoming Legislature and the Wyoming Secretary of State to create laws and rules that promote and maintain uniform voting, vote counting procedures, and orderly voting. As such, it is not in the discretion of any Park County official to alter or deviate from these Wyoming statutes or officially enacted rules. Upon mandated recognition, deference, and adherence to established Wyoming law, the Park County Commissioners and the Park County Clerk and Park County in general are prohibited from engaging in or allowing hand counting or manual tabulation of its election ballots since they are statutorily mandated to be tabulated via machine pursuant to statute. A willful violation of Wyoming's election code by any official subjects them to a possible felony conviction as well as removal from office. Wyoming Statute 2226-119. Unless or until such time as the law changes, any group or individual concerned with election integrity should volunteer. As an election judge, they should also attend the pre-election testing of the voting equipment, which is open to the public. In addition, it is anticipated that this year, post-election audits of the equipment will be performed statewide under the authority of the Secretary of State. In conclusion, the current voting and counting procedures for Park County, like all other counties, must remain unaltered and Park County is prohibited from engaging in or allowing a hand count manual tabulation of ballots until such time that the county is directed to do so or allowed to do so by either the Wyoming Legislature or the Wyoming Secretary of State. The law simply precludes it. As indicated previously, county attorneys are charged with giving legal opinions, which are not always popular opinions. Signed by Brian Skorick, the Park County prosecuting attorney. So with that information received, does not look like the Park County Commissioners have the ability to grant permission for a hand counting of ballots.
Just, just Madam Chair, just a question. Just, we're still going to go through the tabulation procedures, but then we always do with the voting machines. Those will be set by 10:30. What they want to look at What they want to look at is, and the privacy will be kept because nobody puts their name on a ballot. They will know how the votes came in. Just getting the actual count in the boxes and brought to a secure location just to maybe verify the voting machine, but it doesn't have anything to do with the election. Is that allowable?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, certainly in going through this, researching it, you look at, you know, different possible scenarios. I don't believe under that federal law for the preservation of ballots that you can turn them over to anybody. You have to preserve those ballots. Handing them over to a group or any individual and then any other group or individual could come in and request, hey, I want the ballots counted for myself because I didn't like their count. Or I think it's still the machine count. You could get into all sorts of scenarios. With that specific though, could you do it afterwards? The constitutional provision, the Wyoming constitutional provisions, not a lot of I guess, history on that interpretation of that hasn't been issue on defining the secret scene for the preservation of those ballots. Sanctity basically shall be maintained in essence forever. We then have a federal statute, twenty-two months. Preserve.
So we're looking at the state statute twenty-two, twenty-six, one nineteen that that preserves these boxes without being opened or looked at or anything? Is that how that reads?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, you might ask the Park County Clerk on how they actually preserve those ballots, but certainly turning them over to outside of election officials would not be preserving the ballots.
But if they are election officials, would that change things?
If they're election officials that want to sit and count the ballots after the fact. Didn't analyze it in that context. If you wanted an additional opinion, look at that. But again, anything outside of election.
So we have, the pollsters are the people who went through the training on ballots. They took the training, they agreed to be a pollster to tab in and maybe do that count, I think is what the question is.
So I guess the more general question is, do you then have two different calculations? The legislature says that shall be tabulated, shall not be tabulated.
And those will be, but and the other number basically doesn't mean it, it just gives people a peace of mind on how correct some of these calculations are.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, that's why I threw in there. I mean, if there's issues with regards to the integrity of the voting. Public testing of that equipment.
Right.
And my understanding is this year there's going to be post-election orders. How random that's going to be. It's certainly problematic the way Wyoming statutes are currently written to say to hand count. I don't think it's allowed. Again, is it a personal opinion? No, it's a legal opinion. Whether it's a good thing or a bad thing to hand count. That's not the question that was posed to me. It's could you do it? And legally, based on Wyoming statute, the federal statute, and that Wyoming constitutional provision, I don't.
And even if we waited the twenty-two months, like if we went back and allowed them to count the twenty-twenty ballots, is that the same situation, the same statute, twenty-two, twenty-six, one nineteen?
One one four, twenty-two, fourteen, one one four. Or are you talking about twenty-two months?
Yeah, one nineteen.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, so as county attorney, local officials ask me for legal opinions, when interpreting a specific statute, by law, we reach out to the Attorney General for legal opinions. On interpretation of that specific language, that's what I would do is reach out to the Attorney General. If asked to do something.
So if I understand correctly and following Commissioner Mangold's comments, I'm understanding that the question is really the integrity of the machines going forward. So if we're at almost the level of twenty-two months on the two thousand twenty election, where those ballots will be destroyed at that point, we are, we have a question of whether, if you're even interested, of whether you could redo that as a hand count to check what happened with them. The machines haven't changed. So if you went back, we have the results of the twenty-twenty election. And if you were, had the ability, if we can get that opinion, to use those ballots to count to verify what you, the machines, I guess.
May I? Okay, Mr. Chairman. Our alternative is to go back and do an entire hand count on the twenty-twenty election. So I'm going to ask right now in front of everybody that Hans does nothing to destroy the twenty-twenty primary election. We, it was our intention, I think there's a little misunderstanding with Mr. Skorik when Mr. Mangold said on the chain of custody and the secrecy of the ballots. The, for forty-five years of my life, I have dealt with physical evidence and chains of custody and in my determination on a professional level, the timeframe to count those ballots, Brian, would have been between the time that they turn off the machine, it tabulates a printer, it's signed off by the election judge, this is my understanding. The ballots are then removed from the back of the box. The zip drive or pad, whatever they get off of the computer system goes into a lock box with the ballots and then it's transported to a central location. On an evidentiary issue as far as the integrity in the chain of custody, the best time for that count is between the time they're removed from the machine and the time they go in the box to be locked. And as the, as the commissioners are aware, it was our intention to provide substantial volunteers to make sure that count's done and we've rehearsed it in the past, done in an efficient manner. We think we could count eleven thousand ballots in about three hours. But again, I understand you're talking about statute. I want to make the comment that I don't think a statute can override my constitutional right to appear in fair election under Article six, Section thirteen. And so I will commit right now, so as long as I have agreement from my fellow man here, that we, we will intend from this point to do a full hand count of the twenty-twenty election, the primary and the general. That will give us satisfaction. All we're trying to do, Brian, is, is Mr. Skorik, is that I'm not a technical guy. You're not a technical guy. I don't understand computers. You can get an expert in here to me all day to explain that machinery to me. And I have no way as a country boy to say he's right or he's wrong. But I will tell you that a hand count of those ballots is simply pure physical evidence that is indisputable. And then you resolve a major question in this county as I presented to you last time. There's a phenomenal amount of people in this county that are telling me they won't vote on the machines. So our purpose was to give them some satisfaction that there was some duplicity in that count. And if that's going to be denied, then our only remedy is to go back to count the twenty-twenty election for our satisfaction, so.
Okay, let me ask a couple of questions then. First, if we're going to go forward and ask the Attorney General's office if it's possible to allow that to happen.
That's what's directed at me.
Commissioners want to do?
Can we reach out and get their interpretation of the different statutes that I quoted as well as the constitution?
Okay, my other, I guess, thought process on the comments that you just made, having to do with voting in the next election and being uncomfortable with that. When is the twenty-two month timeframe and could they do this prior to the primary in August so that people may or may not have a comfort level, I guess, is what I'm looking at is timing if, in fact, we should get an answer quick enough to allow that to happen.
Okay, well, I'll go back to the election code. We're past the recount of an election.
Right.
So that statute's already gone, so that is not available to them to recount or hand count the twenty-twenty ballots.
But if we get permission from the Attorney General's office and the ballots are no longer valid, they're going to be destroyed, the twenty-twenty ballots, then it's not a recount, it's, they're just verifying of what they, what they find for account. So those ballots are, are going to be destroyed. What we're asking is if it's possible with the Attorney General's opinion, if he agrees to allow them to count those ballots when they would be available. When would they be destroyed?
They'll be destroyed the week after the primary.
Okay.
Yeah, Madam Chair, that's, that's my position too, is it's a matter of, it's a matter of semantics is when you use the word recount in statute, that means it's a recount for an official tabulation.
Challenge.
I think, or a challenge or something. What I'm, what I see this as is just a count. It's just coming up with a number. I mean, it's not, it's, it's already been determined that this can't be an official. It doesn't matter what they come up with. If they come up with the fact that the twenty-twenty election, the machines were way off, it doesn't matter. Unfortunately, it doesn't matter. I don't think it'll happen. I think with the testing we've done, it shows those machines are accurate, but you know, it does, all they wanted, all that's wanted to occur here is a counting of the ballot. Not, I understand the problems we run into in trying to count a ballot of a current election as it's happening, until that's changed by statute. We, our hands are tied, but if, if there's a possibility for just count the ballot, the numbers.
Again, I guess I would turn to the county attorney. I'm not sure that is a public option.
Okay, well, we can get answers to the, to the legal questions. I was just looking for the timeframe.
Mr. Chairman, and I think that's really the misunderstanding here. We're trying to produce a piece of physical evidence that will satisfy people's anxiety.
Right.
It will have no force in effect other than physical evidence and information as we move forward. We have no intention of changing that. We're not challenging arrays. We're trying to create physical evidence. And so I, I wouldn't think that the things that she's talking about apply to this situation.
We'll just, we'll have to get a legal opinion.
We will have no, we will have no recourse of that, the twenty-twenty ballot is sideways by a hundred percent.
Unless it says I wasn't elected.
Exactly. Exactly. And again, I will always fall back, you guys, on the constitution. It's the only document that protects us from tyranny. We have a right to a free and pure election according to the constitution. And the legislature's obligated to guarantee there's no abuses. I don't think anybody in this room can prove beyond a shadow of a doubt in my mind that those machines are impenetrable. I could put my phone in a safe and send it a text, so.
Okay. Desire the commissioners then to request that Mr. Skorik at least get the Attorney General's opinion on the ability to count the twenty, hand count the twenty-twenty primary
Both.
and general ballot.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Just for clarification, we overshot the two thousand ballots.
Perfect.
Madam Chair, one more comment on, on the poll workers. I know that Colleen sometimes has a hard time getting poll workers and for people to go through the training. One of the issues we have is we are required to pay the poll workers one hundred and twenty-five dollars. So we would ask that those who sign up to do this counting also are willing to work during the election to keep track of that.
No, absolutely. I mean, you know, we're, we're going to come to terms here. I'm pretty confident, guys. For the future of Park County on a, on a voting level, but you know, we, there's things that need to be worked out, obviously, with Mangold. Until we have some additional information, it's difficult for us to look forward. We're certainly concerned with the timeframe here. We've lost forty-two days since our last contact with you guys. And, and we know that we need to train three or four hundred people. So you're, you're kind of pushing us back a little bit to give us a loop based on what decision you made today. That was a concern of ours. But under the twenty-twenty election, you know, that's something, don't we all want the truth? And why?
We want to verify.
Why wouldn't you?
Yeah, and I think it'd be nice to have Colleen with a lot of people lined up to work on polls, so that would be nice. She'd have extra people. Or she'll struggle to find people to help out with the election.
They, they, they need a reason to be a volunteer, guys. Everybody's losing faith in the American voting system. They need to be generated. They need to be motivated and they, they're motivated through faith. All of us are. I'm, I'm not going to go vote if I think it's a no.
We need to keep moving because we have other things on our agenda coming too, but I want to clarify what Mr. Skorik is looking at and Commissioner Mangold just brought up an interesting point. If these ballots are the twenty-twenty, do these people have to be certified judges to do it? And if so, who's going to pay for that? If that's the only thing they're going to do and not work an election, because that could come into play also. So I guess we need a couple of things clarified to know how Mr. Skorik is, what questions we need to ask.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, just so I understand, you're, you're approximating three hundred people to count ballots, right?
We, now that I have a number, we'll have to extrapolate, Mr. Skorik, because we went through the process with about thirty people running different numbers of batches and putting them on timers. The efficiency of two counters versus three timeframes for that. So now that we know that it can be seventy thousand ballots, I'll do some homework on that, let you know how many volunteers. You know, if there's no timeframe and crunch on the twenty-twenty guys, then we're not so pressed. If you allow us into the twenty-twenty-one election, the twenty-twenty-two election, that's a whole different story.
I have the numbers. Counting seventeen thousand votes based on our test run that we did the other day, three hundred and forty people counted in an hour. And and so, again, I go back to the subjective language that the legislature has put in. If you have three hundred and forty people counting ballots, you're going to get a different count than if you're a machine count. Machines do what they're told to do in terms of you don't fill in a circle where you only put a mark beside the circle, it's not going to count that. Are ten of your three hundred going to count that? Two ninety-nine, I think that's the subjectivity we're talking about. So I point that out, the counts will absolutely be different. And it would be an account.
I mean, that's interesting in itself.
And so getting back to the question, I believe it's a handle is under current statutes, if a full ballot's being counted, that don't need to be preserved. That's what I'll reach out to the Attorney General for, for their interpretation of the Wyoming statute.
And if the people that count them have to be certified in any way.
Yeah.
Thank you.
My guess is they'll say they do, but again, I think the legislature and the state is trying to protect the integrity of elections and not give different counts out. I think it's the goal of one one four.
So Madam Chair, I guess I'm not so much concerned that they have to be certified, but there's, there arises a question because again, this is not going to produce an official result. This is going to produce a number, but to preserve the integrity of that count, how do we ensure, no offense, but how do we ensure that you guys are, are counting correctly? You, that's, that's all I'm not, I'm not doing, I'm not being disparaging at all. I'm just saying what, at what legal position do we have to be in or you have to be in to handle that, that document, that ballot? And that's, that's a question that I would.
Yeah, our intention, Commissioner, was to train, have everybody trained under the twenty-twenty-two environment. However, we're trying to create a legitimate piece of evidence here. So even allowed to move on the twenty-twenty election, we would go through the process of certifying our counters. We have also discussed with you last time that we will videotape the entire process. We don't want any question. That's the problem right now. So we, we understand transparency and we understand the importance of the integrity of what we're about to do, so we'll go overboard to make sure that it has that professional integrity.
Yes, sir.
And with that, you go through the training as an election judge and to keep, just for the public, to keep the cost down to the county by statute, I believe we're supposed to pay election judges. Now, I do know there is a way around that, so I want to make sure that your, your counters are volunteering and there is a waiver. I signed it when I did it to, that you did not take that money. So that it basically breaks no cost to, you're saying, no, I, I'm.
You did not sign, sign a waiver. We processed your check and you did not choose to cash it.
Is that what I did? Well, I knew I didn't get paid, or I didn't.
Yeah, you pay everybody.
So I don't know how we do that.
You just, you choose not to cash the check. We reissue you a check in two years. If you still choose not to cash it, then it gets turned over to the state of Wyoming as on claim property and you want your money, you go to them. We, we tried twice to issue everyone a check.
Okay, because, you know, three hundred times twenty-five bucks, or what is it that you pay them?
It's a hundred and twenty-five dollars a day, thirty for a meal, seven and twenty-five for the training and if you're five miles away from where you're going to be counting, they'll pay much.
Well, even if it's a hundred and fifty bucks, that's forty-five thousand dollars cost to the county that I don't think that people want to pay.
No, and I don't.
So, and I know we established the volunteer thing. I'm just. So, and I know we established the volunteer thing. I'm just trying to figure out a way to get them around it because she's obligated to, as, as she said to me. Now, I, I chose not to take it.
And would, would we be, Mr. Teal, would we be, if we, we do the 2020 count, which is under no pressures as far as timeframes go? Um. I lost my train of thought, but.
It would just look better for you if they were certified.
No, exactly.
Election judges, correct? Right? So then it looks more, more, more accurate or.
I don't, I don't believe in order to count the 2020, and this is going to be a question.
Right.
For what? Mr. Scorik to the SDAG, I do not believe. To count the 2020 ballots, they would have to go through election judge training. There would have to be some mechanism in there that, that, you know, shows, it shows transparency and shows that it was done legitimately. Um, and also the, but then again, the legal question comes up. Can you handle those ballots? Can we just say, here you go, and, and we trust you, go count? I don't know. That's a question that has to be answered by the AGs.
Well, we also know that in a week they're going to be thrown in their trash can, so.
There's that. Shredded, shredded before they go.
You know, my boy. We'd like to, we would really like to maintain that evidence until we get at least a clear decision on this, guys, because. If we do get the 2020, we'd like to do the primary in the general.
We'll be at the mercy of the Attorney General's office giving Mr. Scorik an answer, but we'll request it as soon as we can.
Any time, can we request a timeframe so we know?
We can request a timeframe to the Attorney General's office, but it doesn't have to listen to it. So we can sure try that it's imperative that we try to get this answer as soon as possible.
Yeah.
But there's no guarantee. But we'll, we'll work for it. We're. We're trying, but.
We, we, we do appreciate your understanding, folks, of what we're trying to do here. There, nobody's trying to be sneaky or do something we're not supposed to do. We're trying to clear up the anxiety of the voters.
Understand.
We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Brian.
Thank you, Brian. Hey, Jessica.
You didn't even eat your bowl down. Don't look at me.
The way I read that letter, though, it's the Secretary of State's decision.
He's asking for a legal opinion. Our Attorney General's office will probably accept it. But if we got it coming, we're going to tell you.
But we still need, even with the legal opinion, we still need permission from Secretary of State.
That's the ballot. He's not next. We have a subdivision.
Kim and, Kim and Jenny show again.
Kim and Jenny show.
Back again, huh?
Thank you.
You're late.
I'm waiting on you.
Yeah. The, um. The next thing on our agenda. Is, uh. Mr. Kim Dillivan, Park County Planning and Zoning, Jenny, uh, with Country Valley Minor Subdivision Number 48, Final Platte SIA.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. And the applicant for this is West Link. And you might remember that originally this subdivision was called West Link, and then a few months ago it changed to Country Valley. In, in case that doesn't ring a bell. This property is in the GRP zoning district, the planning areas, POW. We did receive a final plat application for this minor on February 8th of this year. Including payment in the final plat, which you had a chance to see. Then we received a revised final plat on April 18th of this year. That is in Figure 1. And the applicant requests approval of this five lot minor subdivision. The lots will vary in size from 5.73 acres to 8.86 acres, all for residential use. The applicant also requests that you approve their subdivision improvements agreement. And you had a chance to see that agreement that will address utilities, uh, electricity and gas, some signage. The road, um, and, and road, um, components, drainage and some other improvements, I think, including such as mailboxes. And that draft subdivision improvements agreement was first received on January 18th, and the county attorney's office has, has looked at it. Requested minor changes and then granted approval on May 10th of this year. This ownership, as I mentioned, it's owned by West Link LLC. The location of this property, it's shown in Figure 2, but it's approximately 0.8 miles south of POW. And it's approximately 0.8 miles south of Highway Finae, and it's at the end of County Road Eight and a Half. And Madam Chair, as I mentioned, this is in the GRP zoning district, and these lot sizes as proposed are, are all consistent with that zoning district. Terms of neighboring land use, that is shown in Figure 3. This property is primarily surrounded by agriculture, although there are some residential uses and I believe some subdivisions in the area. The topo map on Figure 4 essentially shows this property is, um, really has, has no slope at all. And it's currently vacant, but it is irrigated land. By understanding, it's been used as, for egg production lately. Terms of notices, a public notice is not required for final plat review. We've not received any public comments. The, um, the Board of County Commissioners, all of you approved the sketch plan back in July of last year with conditions. Those conditions, we have listed on page 5 of our staff report. Number 5 was an update from Public Works. That condition has been met. We shared, I believe, several of those notices or those comments with you. So I know Public Works has made a, um, has made several comments, primarily, I assume, in regard to the SIA. Also, a condition of yours was the, the submittal of three road names. That has occurred and road names have been decided. So there's a road name for that north-south road and then a road name for the east-west road. Also, a condition was the approval of a long-term noxious weed control plan. That condition has been met. Another one was a draft homeowners association agreement. That has been met. We shared that with you. And then the approval or the submission of a draft subdivision improvements agreement. That has occurred. And the county attorney has looked at that and approved that. Another condition was a notice on the final plat of the Wyoming right to farm in Rancheck. That's been met. Madam Chair, on, on, um, oh, I'm sorry, and the, in terms of the plat review committee. They reviewed this final plat on February 23rd of this year. There were some corrections and changes that were required. Then we did get the revised version back on April 18th. The rest of page 6 of our staff report talks about submittals and specifications for final plat, supporting documents. And the subdivision improvements agreement. Um, and again, we have, we have a list of findings. We're recommending if you, if you agree to approve. This final plat and the subdivision improvements agreement. We'd like those to be in separate motions, but they can be in one resolution. And we're happy to answer questions if you have any.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Um, on, on condition one, um, that's been met, so do we need it? Condition one, applicants shall comply with recommendations required set forth by Public Works. And then the condition that actually has been met and they're satisfied, so do we need that condition in there?
You know, Commissioner Teal, Commissioner Chairman, I do believe they have met the conditions of Public Works because I know they, they applied for a, a smaller easement that was allowed and that was approved. So I know, I know that condition has been met.
Yeah, and there's a letter in there from Brian that says that Public Works is satisfied. No other issues. So I was just curious. I mean, it's not, it's really not a big deal. It's just. We can throw that one out.
And, you know, and, and also I know, um, you know, Public Works will have to approve, um, the, the, some of the conditions on the SIA. You know, those things will have to be gone, will go through Public Works, so.
So maybe we need to, even.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah, well, thank you. Okay, this is not a public hearing, so it's just discussion between the commissioners. Does anybody have any other questions for him? What's the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Um, approve the plat? We have to do these separately, so.
For the plat.
Okay.
Second.
Approved and seconded to approve the final plat as presented. Is there any further discussion? Are none of those in favor?
Aye. Madam Chair, I move, did we approve the SIA?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the SIA as presented. Any further discussion? None of those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, commissioners.
Come on, you know. You should be just popping those right off.
Thank you, Jenny.
Pat, I didn't even recognize you when you walked in the door.
Been under incognito.
Yeah, after the meeting. We're awful close to what we advertised. Um. So the last thing on our agenda today, um, is a discussion with the Park County Assessor, Pat Meyer. On the issue with the latest property tax assessments. And if there's anything that the county commissioners can take a look at or suggestions that we can make to the state legislature to, uh, to help this situation.
Okay. So where would you like to start on? My, uh. The increase problem we got going on in Park County?
That's right.
Yeah. Okay, well, let's, let's go over what happened here. Our norm, you know, I'm looking at our normal, I'll just use Cody as an example. Our normal increase, we, we divide them up and you got low-valued, medium-valued and high-valued homes. That's how, how we compare your houses with ones that are selling. So the normal years previously, you know, your low-valued houses, the average house in Cody would be 185,000. Uh, and that percentage from the year before, the average percentage was 4%, you know, or 1 to 10. Your average house, the average percent increase was 2%. And that number is 283,947 in 2020. That's what the average house in Cody costs. Your higher-valued costs, 490,388, up 2% from the previous year. So this is what we were talking about. Now came 2021, when we had the influx of lots of people moving in here. I know I've told you this before, 230 from California, 180 from Colorado. Montana gave a bunch. We had 1,500. All in all, and those are just the certified voters. We don't know how many more there might have been. And we had another 500 move in from other counties in the state to Park County. That are certified voters as well. So in 2021, we saw, we saw a different, a bigger increase than we were used to. Um, your lower-valued homes, uh, they, they went up all the way 10% in Cody. Um, and that your middle homes, and that was up to 203,000 from 185,000 the previous year. Your, um. Your mid-valued homes, they went up about 13% or the new value was 325 up from 283. So people, we had increases last year and your high-valued homes did not go up that much. They went up 11% but the average. Price was 474, so they did not change that much, you know, with the sales we had. You know? So. So we started seeing it this year. We went down, Natrona County, of course, had their, they had their problems last year. Most of the legislation to limit taxes. I mean, worried about appealing, changed that, came from their 3,000 appeals and they're just out of whack values. You know, people were getting increases. Nobody understood how it was coming up with the values. 3,000 appeals was unheard of. You know, it was just, it was terrible. So it was, it was a bad deal for them. So they had tax limits and at that time I thought we were fine, you know. I, they were proposing stuff, but I don't know where they were getting their information from. They never did say. They were winging, we want 5% or we want 3% increases, no more than that. And you know what would have happened? Since they're so bad now, people would have never, well, you wouldn't have got to market value. My whole thing was. This was the Natrona County problem, not a Park County problem. Well, I found out later, this was a Park County problem because in 2022. You know, we don't start analyzing sales to market till at least December, you know, we're waiting for all the sales to get in and so forth. But I went a little earlier than, after that testimony and I said. We got problems, you know, I was seeing a 35% increase right off the bat in Cody with all the houses, you know. So we did start looking into other states. We found at that time 15 states that have limited increases. I've talked to other assessors from those states to help us out. I liked Arizona and I'm working with Oklahoma too. Now they have fair market value. And limited price value. So, and in their state, you can't go up more than 5%. But your, it doesn't change the assessor's job. We're going to get fair market value. We do the same thing. It's just you have that listed on your assessment schedule. And you never pay over 5% increase. This is how Arizona does it now, mind you. And I think Oklahoma will be doing it the same way when I'm done talking to him. So I thought it was a pretty good idea to try to get them to reopen the limited, because they got voted down out of committee. And the revenue in September, it was voted down. So I thought we could. So I did contact some of my friends in the legislation. And I wanted at that time 35, oh, couldn't we just put a 20% cap? So at least then the next year, if they didn't get 20%, they'd come up to fair market value and so forth. It never made it anywhere. I, I couldn't make it down the legislation because of all of the new work I had trying to. Figure out what we were going to do for the increases and couldn't do much, but the work was. Because a lot of places didn't have a lot of sales and you really couldn't go back. Usually I look at one, two and three years of sales. But I couldn't do that because, yeah, it, it didn't make any sense. You would have had to, uh. You would have had to vary the price. You would have had to adjust the sales price, use an adjusted sales price. Which goes up, which really doesn't help anybody. It just looks good statistically. So most of everything was based on one year of sales, residential and that, because you want to use your most recent sales. Now, we also have to be in compliance with the state board equalization. We can't just say, well, we're not going up like that. You know, no, they'll come in and they will equalize you and they could, and then you won't have any appeal rights. They could put. 20% on everybody across the board. It's been done, not very often. Because we're always in compliance, because it's not that difficult. To get in compliance, but in 2022, the bad year, our new low-valued home, the average one is 275,000. That was up from 203,000 in there. Our new mid-size home. Was up $400,000 and that was up from 325. And our high-valued homes went from 474 to 740,000. And more, we've had million-dollar sale houses there. That were not that much from the previous years, you know? So the percentages of the high-valued homes, they went up 27%. That's just on average. It could have went all the way to 50%. And we're just looking at Cody. Um. The mid-size homes went anywhere from 11 to 43% and the small ones went from 20 to 40. So we have an increased problem. That's where it happened. Um. I am looking into it. I have contacted our legislators. They're aware that I'm going to be coming up with information from them. Uh, we're working as soon as we get through this appeal period. We'll be concentrating much more on meeting people from other states, doing Zoom meetings. Because you're also going to have to change the state constitution, which everybody worries about. But I don't see why anybody wouldn't vote for a tax limit. You know, I don't think it is that difficulty. But I am looking into how Arizona did it, how Oklahoma did it, and we're finding some new states that. And we're finding some new states that are doing, have done it as well. So, yeah, it's not a done deal now.
Oh, no, I was, I was waiting for you. I thought you were finishing up.
Now, uh, well, you know me, I'll keep going. But, um, so, yeah, we're looking into that. Our legislators know what we're working on. The assessors want me to present this at the assessors meeting in July. And the goal is to have stuff ready in September for the Revenue Committee meeting. If we have the backing as it is, you know, that's, that's our goal. That's what we want to do. And they have it there. Now, I'm looking for any help, but you know, sometimes if you get a lot of help, everybody's going in different directions. I think it'll be more help if we give the information out. In some states, you just don't want to use, they're too complicated. They might have had limits. We're trying to find out what's good for Wyoming here. So that's where I'm at on, on tax limits. That's what we're trying for. Because like I've told you guys, stories of older people coming in my office, they're buying a house for twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars in nineteen sixty-five and I've got it valued for four hundred and twenty-five thousand. And they live off two thousand twenty-nine dollars on social security. That doesn't give them much room to buy any food and so forth. So there's the problem. We don't want people moving from Cody. But it's more of a, even when this happens, it happens to the renters, it happens to bartenders, everything goes up. And if we don't want to turn into a Teton County, we need to start thinking about this. Teton County, their assessor's office, the only one that has property in town and it's low income property, a condo, but it's worth over seven hundred and fifty thousand, that's the low income. But everybody else drives an hour away to get to work. And that's like all of them. They come from Driggs, Idaho, Alpine, all over the place.
Madam Chair, I think, I mean, we all, we all know, we all know how we got here. You know, and, but how to fix it is the big question, because, you know, Senate File sixty-nine was proposed last year with five percent increase. There was problems with that bill. It didn't make it out of committee. Senate Resolution Two, which would have have, uh, given the county the option to do property tax relief for the elderly and the infirm. It didn't make it out of committee. You know, the property tax relief fund, it, it did make it out and did, you know, it's three hundred million or, I think it was three hundred million.
Three million.
Excuse me, three million was, was put into that fund for property tax relief. But, you know, it's, I just don't want to see a knee jerk reaction and, and have it not work, you know. The, you know, we've talked, I hear a lot of people talking about Proposition thirteen out of California, but then I've researched that some. And it, it actually drove revenues down so far that counties were having a hard time coming up with enough money for the, for the basic services, so.
And there's also acquisition cost.
Yeah.
Comes, but very few states, Prop thirteen, people were trying to tell me Florida does that, but Florida doesn't do that. But they have a lot of deductions in Florida. And I'm looking at that. I'm looking at homeowners exemptions too, bringing it back. But homeowners exemptions kind of is a Band-Aid for a couple of years. Yeah, you're gonna get money off, but if it continues to skyrocket, you're gonna be in the same problem with increased property.
And I'm sure the question I had with, with some of that, the legislation that's being proposed out there, is it puts a cap on how much it can go up, but it doesn't do anything on how much it, it drops. So if you quit collecting on this, on the upper end, if private, if property values drop, I mean, does it mean that we put a cap on how low it can go? I don't know.
Well, I'll tell you, Lee, Mrs. Chairman, um, when we, Madam Chair. Okay, well, when we went to market value, believe it or not, I was around before we ever got there. And when we went to market value the first year, I mean, that was worse than what I'm dealing with now, because we changed everything. We were on a nineteen sixty-seven cost system. Most lots were the same. You know, it was, the assess rate was twenty-five percent, not nine and a half. But anyways, we went to market value and there were lines outside our doors of people coming in, because it changed every, it was a dramatic change. But you could only go up twenty-five percent and you could only go down twenty-five percent from the previous year. And that, that was in statutes and it lasted four years. And then, then we, we were getting better at it as we went, you know. A lot more appeals for the county commissioners.
My question, I guess, or concern, Pat, is for a hundred years, you know, my grandfather, my father, we've all lived through, Wyoming went through boom and bust time. And we relied on energy. Now those times have changed. Will they come back? We don't know. But would if we jump knee, knee, what do you call it? Knee jerk reaction and put some type of limit. Wyoming has always been somewhat conservative. In the good years, we put it away and that's why we have such reserve that we do. So if we limit this and we come through another energy boom, I'm not saying it could, but it could. Would that limit our, our chance of revenue to build our coffers?
Well, you know, I've explained this, uh, we do rely on oil and gas minerals, you know. We're up and, we're, we were at six hundred and twenty-four million for the valuation. My nearest estimate now is eight hundred and thirty-five million. So we gained a lot. The previous year, we lost a hundred million dollars. And as I've told the college when I was over there, a hundred million dollars, because remember oil and gas production, it's a hundred percent, one hundred percent.
Their assessed value goes up as well, just like residents, correct?
Their assessed value?
Yeah.
They pay, we're just talking production. They pay a hundred percent of their production, what they, what they sold, sold it for. That's where they're taxed.
When you have a boom and you have, you, you, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but you have seventy drilling rigs going in, you know, in, in Wyoming, they're taxed as well, aren't they not?
They're, if they got seventy rigs going up, they're, they're assessed for the well, but that's at eleven and a half percent, not at a hundred percent.
My point is, when you have seven and you don't collect, that those seven rigs are worth a million dollars a piece and you have seventy, it's your worth. I'm, I'm just saying that those, value of those rigs go up and down like res, real estate.
Right.
And I'm, I, nobody likes to pay taxes, especially on your home, your personal stuff. But is there a way to separate industry so that if we go, if we find ourselves in a boom for economic reasons, whether it's energy or something else, that we have the ability to coffer some of that revenue?
You know, let's go out with the hundred million we lost. I just want to explain how much that is. To get that hundred million from residential people, we would have to build the whole town of Powell over with average houses. That's how much a hundred million loss is. Takes a lot for us to gain back. For the local valuation, although we're steady, we always go up three or four percent. This year, we're going up twenty-two percent. That hasn't been done in a long time. But we also got a lot of money from the oil and gas, as you're paying four dollars there, you know, in the four dollars for a gallon of gas. That means oil and gas valuation is gonna be really good this year. But it could end again next year, you know. That's right, we're not on a, we're on a fixed rate system. There's fixed rates and there's budget rates. Budget rates, when you get one of those booms, you get to lower the mill levy. Because you only get to budget for what you need. And if your budget is increasing from the previous year, you gotta show why before you can do that. If it goes the opposite, if you're losing values, you can also raise the mill levy. Now, there's limits and there's problems with that as well, you know. It's, neither of them are perfect, but our budgeting problem in Park County is not very good, you know. Everybody's got their own board. I think, uh, Chairman Tillman and I have talked over this over the last twelve years. And nobody's got any power over the boards. I mean, they get to budget whatever they want. They seem to be able to put in reserves whatever they want. And so it's hard. So we, right now, we're, and we're all limited. Now, not that the county has to take the twelve mills, you can lower them, schools have to take it. They don't get to lower the mills at all. And I don't know what, what their budgets are like and I don't know why it matters.
Because it's supplemented by the state.
Right.
So they require that the schools raise what they can locally on their mills, that's the maximum mills, and then the rest is supplemented.
And special districts also, if you don't take your maximum mills, a lot of times you can't get the grant money either. Because they say you don't need a grant money. So see, there's just stuff that I certainly can't fix. And, you know, there's stuff both ways to go. I mean, it'd be nice if the county commissioners could go over the budget and make them do it and say you don't need that many mills, but they can't. They get to get whatever they want.
As far as the appeals process, I suppose you've made quite a few requests.
We're just, we, we get informal appeals that are usually worked out before I ever have to come up here. And I'd say that's gonna be the case this year. But a lot of people are understanding the increases. To, to appeal the increase, where you're kind of wasting your time. You need to appeal what you can get for that house. If, you know, that, because the increases won't work. I have had some taxpayer that just wanted to get their whole subdivisions together and come and appeal the increase, and that's nice. But I said, maybe you should start looking at the tax limits and stuff and so forth, which made them not want to appeal and continue that. So I've been giving them a lot of information on other states, on some ideas I had or we had down in, in my office as to do that.
Is it worth it for someone to appeal?
Well, you know, I've gotten more trouble for saying this than, and the assessors cringe. I don't know how you can win an appeal of a residential house, because I've gone over every aspect of it. If you're being overvalued, you're gonna go down. There's no doubt about it. If you bring in any, I mean, in over thirty years, I've never lost an appeal. Because I don't come up here without knowing, I've done everything. I've already gone through the whole appeal with the taxpayer, so they don't win then, you know. Can they win in other counties? Maybe so. I'm not sure. And it's, it's really hard, because all you guys have the ability to do. If somebody says their house is worth three hundred thousand and I have it at five hundred thousand and you agree with the taxpayer, all you can do is reband it back to me to go over it again. And then when that happens, usually they send it to the state board. The state board goes, it, it's a hard process. And most of the counties use attorneys, and I have been using attorneys, which I'm not gonna do for residential people anymore. Unless they have an attorney, I'm not having an attorney with me, you know, because I don't think it's fair. I think it's easier if we, if we start doing it, because that's how we used to do them all the time. And then I was assigned an attorney and our attorneys didn't do much. I mean, they just asked me these standard questions and then I said how I valued property. So if we do get appeals, I will be educating you on appeals and what your job is and what you have to look for. I have a presentation for you, but we'll see.
So, in our level or at our level, at the county commissioners, we control only twelve of the seventy-six mills that are out there.
Twenty-five in Cody.
So, yeah, so we have to look at, um, at our budget and see where we're at. I think we do that in August. With your, my conversation, that, uh, that we can take a look. I have no idea where we're gonna come in and what that looks like right now, but that's the only thing that the commissioners can do at this point in this year. Except work with you on legislation to, to get to our representatives and, and the legislature to figure out a way to move forward.
Yeah, you know, I, I'm hoping to get the County Commissioners Association to help us on this too. You know, and I will keep you guys informed on anything and where we're going and any ideas you might have. I'll just supply you with a lot of information. You can say, hey, maybe we should look at this a little closer, stuff like that.
Commissioner?
Yeah, I was just gonna, you know, one quick comment. And I, I don't think you can answer this question. But what is the percentage as far in our revenue stream, the property taxes bring in? Do you have any idea? I know in the overall scheme of things, it's relatively small.
Well, there, you got, there's.
Figure it out.
Now, we, we're local valuation on property taxes, I think it, well, we also have state assessments involved in there. But we were at, at one point, we were at sixty-nine percent was the local values for everything, you know, except for mineral production. I think I've showed you that before. I have every year from nineteen seventy-five on, I mean, like in nineteen eighty, industry paid ninety percent of our taxes. We were ten. As, as they started going down, we started going up and making more.
Okay, well, the twenty, twenty twenty property tax has brought in seven and a half million dollars.
Okay.
So about a little over forty percent of our total, total revenue.
Right, right, so.
And I, I guess the point that I'm making is what we're talking about here. And I understand the tax, my tax has gone through the roof for numbers of a rate. But, you know, I mean, what we're talking about here is a double edged sword. And if we as county commissioners, so we've been having financial problems for a number of years now. I mean, if we talk about lowering the mill levy and average inflation is eight and a half percent, we can't maintain what we do in the county now, so.
I agree. You know, it's really hard to move, because you never raised the mill levy. You're limited at twelve when you needed the money. You don't get to raise it either.
Right.
So we live on this fixed rate, you know. And I don't remember Park County ever lowering the mill levy.
Um, according to Commissioner Gary.
It could have happened at that, at one time or another. I mean, Teton County, they lowered their county, county, uh, mill levy, but they made an extra billion dollars in valuation this year. Yeah, you can, it's pretty easy to lower your, your mill levy when you're making that, when you have that kind of money.
Maybe they'd do a grant.
What's that?
Maybe they'd do a grant to us.
There you go.
Okay, um, I know there's some public here that was interested in, in this topic. And if there's anyone that would like to speak, we'll certainly give you the time if there's a concern or a question that comes to mind. Representative Newsom?
So I am a frequent and annual visitor to Pat's office when he talks about tax. And, um, because I'm a nerd and because I have records for, for instance, twenty-two, the year two thousand, on my property tax at our place up the South Fork, I did a, I did my dandy spreadsheet. And what I found was that my taxes went down three years, in those twenty-three years, that my taxes actually decreased. One year by about eight percent, another year, another couple of years by about two percent. Couple of years stayed steady. And if I did the calculation all through those twenty-three years, what I found was my increase was five point eight four percent, including this twenty-four percent increase we took this year. So over that long term, if you look at the long term, you can see that our valuations, you know, this year is a shock for sure, but through those other years. And then I did the calculation, what if we increased five percent every year consistently? I would be paying about a thousand dollars more. If I did the, the cap and when it decreased, the cap came in and, and in those lower years, um, it would be about a fifty percent increase instead of a hundred and ninety-four percent increase in the straight up five percent. I, I too, like Commissioner Livingston, thought, should, do we need to put a floor on this? If we're gonna put a cap, do we need to put a floor? Because what we need to remember is you guys get twelve mills, the schools get over half of it, the, the fire departments get some, the cemetery gets some, and the hospital. So capping it at five percent, especially, you know, we have some of the lowest insurance rates for fire because we have such awesome fire districts, both Powell and Cody. And if we, if they don't have the funds because of a cap to continue to provide that great service for us, where does that put us as individuals with our insurance, you know, as we look at the bigger picture? If you have no questions?
Madam Chair, I think we get, I think the county, if I recall correctly, it's about thirty-two percent of the taxes collected under the, under the established, the mills as established. I think is where, you know, the rest of it's going to, like you said, schools, fires, hospital.
College.
College.
Yeah.
And let's remember, those of you who are getting agricultural rates, you don't see these increases like everybody else does. Because you're not paying market value on your land. So that makes a big difference too. You know, you've got taxed on one to two acres at fair market value and your house and your bill. So that makes a difference. So if you're getting agricultural rates, you're in, you're in a lot better shape.
Would it come down to statute? Would it come down to statute legislators?
Legislators.
And, and Pat and I have talked, and I'm working with Pat to maybe find, find a, a place where we can, um, protect the taxpayer from these large, large increases, but as, as well as make sure that we have plenty of money to provide the services that are provided by the county and the school and the hospital and the fire department and the cemetery.
Let me ask you a question then, as we go forward, and if, if this does come before the legislature next year, and we're looking at a, at, the way I understand it, a lot of this has to be a constitut, Wyoming Constitution Amendment. We don't have an election again until twenty-four, and a constitutional amendment has to go on the ballot. So in this scenario with the inflation and the purchasing and things that have been happening, until that happens, we could continue to see this level of an issue? Or do you see it continue to, I mean, we don't know if it, inflation and everything else is going to keep going, but it doesn't look good.
I, I believe if we could get this done in a year, now you're saying we wouldn't have an election for at least two years?
Well, till twenty-four.
Or it couldn't go on the ballot?
Right, well, unless they call for a special election, I guess, which is.
I mean, then.
I don't know. And I guess.
I think if it was going to, and we were going to change it, even if it wasn't elected, because of who doesn't want to stop an increase, the, the whole plan is so people don't have to move out and leave their homes and leave Park County. That's the whole plan. Why wouldn't the assessors just say, I'm not doing it this year? And just simply wait. I mean, could it be a possibility? Could, could we go back retroactive? Could, should be brought up, you know? If we know that the state of Wyoming wants to go in this direction, there's other options too than sitting around waiting to get hit again.
Okay.
With millions.
That's what I was wondering, if the timeframe, if there's anything else that can be done.
And, um, Madam Chairman, the, we passed that, um, county option bill as well. So you have the option to, um, create a program, create a refund program, I believe, with some parameters about income and about asset level, and we have the state program. And maybe what we could do in the short term is look at that state program and raise those income levels and raise those asset levels. Um, because they're, they're pretty low. It's forty-eight thousand income, household income and a hundred and thirty-three thousand per adult in the household for a, assets other than the home and other than one car per each or one vehicle per each person, um, per each adult. So, you know, that's a pretty low level of assets and a pretty low level of income. Um, so maybe we could look at a, at the state level at raising that somewhat.
I, I'm still a little stuck on the formula for the refund program. I mean, you know, as far as I've heard, you can get up to half your taxes refunded to you. But I don't know, like, if you make right under forty-eight thousand, if it works that way, I know if you're getting the veterans exemption, you don't get it, but at one time my mom was on it and her, when she lived in Cody in the condo, I believe it was like six hundred dollars minus the two hundred for the veterans exemption every year when they were funding it.
And the veteran's exemption is still in place.
All right.
Yes, okay. Okay, anybody else?
What I find interesting, I'm looking at Senate Joint Resolution Two, and paragraph F, it says a refund granted under this paragraph, and this, the joint resolution was the one that was for the Albury and the, and the firm. But a refund granted under this paragraph shall be funded only from the revenues of the county opting, opting to implement that county's county optional property tax refund. So we have to have county dollars in order to create a, a refund program for property taxes. So it's kind of, I guess, I don't know, I find that ironic.
That was kind of a Teton County bill.
Yeah.
Anything else from, yes, Representative Rodriguez Williams?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, for the opportunity to speak, members of the board. Um, I appreciate the change of heart in our county assessor and, um, the acknowledgement um, from the board that this is a problem, uh, in Park, Park County right now. I haven't received this many phone calls and emails, um, since COVID first hit, and there were mandates, uh, coming into play. And so, um, my concern is, um, taxing people out of their homes. I have received lots of calls from the seniors that are on fixed incomes, receiving social security, uh, just like our assessor has. And unfortunately, um, there is no bill in place. Uh, the concept of putting a cap or a limit on, uh, property, property taxes or, um, studying the issue uh, did not get passed this past session or the session before. Um, as you know, this is my first term, uh, in the legislature, and it almost seems like, um, preventative bills are, are hard to pass in the legislature. Um, and I don't think it's, um, any secret that we saw this coming. Just what's happening across our nation, people leaving states, um, to, to live a better quality of life, and, and Wyoming is, is that place that people want to live in. Um, but unfortunately, the consequence is, is that when people get taxed out of their home, the culture of Park County and the culture of the state of Wyoming will change. And so I think that there is, uh, definitely a need to, to put some sort of limit or something in place um, to keep Wyoming nights in their homes. And I don't have the magic answer, um, but there are people that I trust that are experts in this, and I can tell you that I will be doing my part within Park County, um, to host some meetings and to educate my constituents from a conservative Republican, uh, perspective. And I stand for any questions.
Yeah, Representative Rodriguez Williams, thank you. Um, so even with that Senate File sixty-nine, which was a five percent cap that wasn't effective until January, January one, twenty twenty-three. Uh, so anything that we get done legislative-wise, statute-wise or constitutional, it might be too little, too late. So I guess I would implore you, Representative Newsom, all of them, everyone and ourselves, to look at how we can fix or make better some of the, the optional refund programs. And I'm not, I don't have, I don't have a crystal ball. I don't have any great ideas, but I think that's, that's for short term, that's the only way we're going to get it fixed. We want to wait for legislation. We're going to have people gone because they can't afford to stay here. So if we can change the, change the parameters on the, on the refund programs, you know, we'll, we'll come to legislature and ask for, for more money. Um, but I think a, a short-term fix has got to happen, and it's got to happen, you know, quickly. And we, we can't wait on legislation. I'm not, I'm, that's not disparaging to you or Representative Newsom, I'm just saying it's not, it's going to be too little, too late for some folks out there.
I would agree with you.
Unfortunately, renters aren't eligible for that because they don't own the house. They're not getting it, yet they're paying the increase in taxes due to, it just passes it out.
Yep.
Due to them, so that's a, that's, it's a, it's a tough situation. But it's something I'm glad our legislators are interested in and finding answers. I'm just have some ideas. It's for, I'm not a legislator. This is for legislation to come up with some solid numbers and not just where did you get the five percent from, or where did you get three? Or, you know, did you look at any other states? That's all I'm doing. You know, is supplying our legislators and the county commissioners with information, you know? It's not going to be a, maybe suggestions of this really seems to work well in this state better than, it might work for Wyoming. And then again, maybe none of it would work. I don't know. I, I'm optimistic that there's some better stuff out there. There's better ways so we don't have to send people out of here.
In the meantime, is, um, Representative, is there a process that you have or our representatives or senators have here from the county that you can influence getting moving, um, at this point? I know, you know, you have committee meetings all year long, but I don't know what kind of pull anybody has to be able to get after this topic ASAP statewide.
Statewide. Well, unfortunately, I don't serve on the revenue committee, and I think that's the best resource, um, when it comes to constituents and, uh, public officials to, to push the issue on. Um, but I will definitely do my part. I've committed to my constituents that I will do my part and, and fight for them. Um, I think it's, it's unfortunate too that the renters in, uh, Park County are like, um, our assessor just mentioned, are seeing the brunt of this as well because, um, it, it's already hard enough to find a rental in Park County. And so, um, matters are just getting worse.
True.
But I do appreciate the collaboration, um, and the opportunity to speak, and, um, look forward to suggestions from, uh, Mr. Meyer and from the commissioners, and hopefully from the, um, County Commissioners Association, um, for their support as well in the future.
I'm surprised of what comes up and what we can do to help information-wise, and we'll see what we can get done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Or, yes, sir. Yes, would you please state your name for the record, please?
My name is Dan Shine. Thank you for giving the opportunity to speak. Representative Newsom mentioned about the five percent over a long-term increase in property taxes. I think that that's a good number to know. However, it doesn't impact our citizens that are suffering or going to suffer an approximate twenty-two percent increase now. I support Pat's comments regarding the fact that the commissioners should look at your millage, the twelve percent or the twelve mills that you're charging. I realize that you have statutory, non-statutory budgets and reserves that you need to maintain. But I think that probably if you could find reserves there that you could reduce and reduce your millage. And I think as the county commissioners, I know that you have no control over the budgets that are presented by the cemeteries, fire districts, the other groups that were mentioned here. But I think that you could set a good example by lowering your millage, and I think with the public's influence, we could perhaps put a little bit of leverage behind some of those other volunteer boards to lower their millage requests as well, because some of those are sitting on considerable amounts of money. I've spent a fair amount of time in Pat's office this past week. I spent a fair amount of time on the county clerk's website, looking at available budgets and financial reports. And we're sitting on a lot of money in this county. And I think that when we're facing a twenty-two percent increase, we need to all chip in and do something to help these people. I want the fire department to come to my house when it's on fire. I don't want to hit a pothole out front with my truck and have to replace the tire. I agree and support all of the services that we get from you. But I have to tell you, I also share the role of the chairperson at the Cody Cupboard. And over the past few years, I have seen people who have been coming there for years and years. They are no longer our clients, and they're not our clients because they don't live here any longer. They were renters, they were homeowners who've been priced out of Park County. As people have said, that's going to continue, and it's only going to get worse. And with these numbers that we're looking at, yes, the numbers at the Cody Cupboard are going to go up. There's going to be more people in need of food assistance. That's what we're there for. I am not in the least bit complaining about that, but it's a fine line to walk, right? As our numbers go up, we're in one way successful, but that's a bad reflection on our county. So I would love to see our numbers go down to the point that people don't need us. So my final statement again is I support Pat, and I ask you, when you look at your budget, to consider setting an example by lowering the millage for these other boards. Thank you for your time.
I'm sure, yeah, we, we have looked at and got ten numbers, actually this morning. If we drop our, if our, if we drop one mill, that's eight hundred thousand less that the, the county would collect, and we're in charge of that. I do like your idea of reaching out to those districts. I, I like it because, because that's been a great of mine of that I couldn't, I have these mills that are presented to me that I, that I have to approve. Well, if I can't disapprove, why, why are they bringing them to me? You know, I would, you know, I think, but I would, with citizen, with, with some citizen, uh, encouragement, you might get some districts to back off a mill for, for one year.
Yeah, I would encourage everybody to.
And eight hundred thousand, I mean, it, I hate saying it's, it's not much, but it really isn't, but it's something. You know, when it, when it comes, when it comes to it, if you can, if we could talk the other districts, the districts into backing off, it might be significant. It might mean the difference.
Yeah, there, again, if you, if you spend some time on the county clerk's website and put together the reserves, and, and some of them, um, do have wording in there describing why they're sitting on.
Fire Department is really good on, on wording why they, why their reserves.
I would agree. Some of that wording has been consistent for three, four years, so we just re-sign it and move along. And I think there's opportunities all around the county to save money and help our current residents to stay here and survive this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was just going to say, you know, along the line of special districts, and that's kind of been a, that probably aligns since I first got elected commissioner of Pat Noe. And there has been some legislation that's been passed, and we, we really still have no control. We're requiring special districts to be more transparent, but we as county commissioners have no control over. You know, and, and in my mind, the only way that you could ever get control over special district is pass legislation to put a cap on the percentage of reserves that they have. Because there are special districts that have amassed huge reserves. And I know there was a point in time a number of years ago where they thought that maybe the state was going to take those reserves away from them, so they went out and spent them real quick.
Well, under, uh, as that, Madam Chairman, as that goes, the state of Wyoming has a rainy day fund almost larger than anybody else in the United States, a billion dollars, six hundred million. But there's no plan for it. That, and that's always been the thing. Well, when we were going through COVID and I was testifying at the revenue committee, I just went, well, when is it raining? You know, I mean, we're going through all this, we were under, and I think they might have took a couple hundred million out of it for something or other. I don't know for sure.
Took it out of the fun counties and cities.
Okay. So, yeah, it's not reserves if you have a plan, and I like that if the fire department has a plan, they're building it for a fire truck, we've got to start now and so forth. Or the cemetery districts, I, I don't know what their plan is, you know?
I don't know.
Yeah, so plans for reserves should be one of the, one reality for special districts and all of us as to what you're planning on using your reserves for, when do you believe they're going to be necessary? Than just having them.
Okay, yes, sir.
I have a little bit.
Your name for the.
Marvin Lindhorn, sorry, from Powell. I have a little bit different take on it. I think any, uh, relief that's given should be across the board. I'm old, but I'm concerned about young people and renters that have already been mentioned here. My suggestion would be to come up with a formula. Years ago, there was a lot of, uh, discussion about lack of uniformity in assessments across the state. Supposedly that's been fixed. So if you took the average, uh, increase across the state and applied that to reducing millages, millage caps by that amount, and then if later assessments declined, then it could apply to raise the millages back up again to the current caps. So that's a, I mean, it would be formula A, and it would be across the board. Uh, instead of trying to pick winners and losers, yeah. Thank you.
That, thank you for the input. I think there is something in the, in the Wyoming constitution about equal treatment to all citizens, and I think we have to take a look at that.
Hi, Nina Weber. I have a, a comment. Uh, many people have spoken about the tax increases and how it's going to hurt them. Yes, some are older, some are newer families that have come here, some are many, many people that have just moved here. Uh, some of the comments that I've been hearing is, how come, and these are people who have been here for five years or ten years or longer. There's, they're telling me, how come I'm paid, I paid, let's just, this, these are made up numbers. I paid fifty thousand for my house, and now, five years later, the neighbors have sold their house for, let's say, two hundred thousand. So now we all get to pay the increase in taxes, and people are really mad about that. Has it been, and Pat, this is a question for you, was it set up that way before where if you bought a property? Has it been, and Pat, this is a question for you, was it set up that way before where if you bought a property for fifty thousand, that's what you were taxed on? Not dependent on what your neighbors were paying?
No, on fair market value, it all matters. We, we actually can't use your sale to value your house. It goes into the pool. And we're in mass appraisal, we're setting the values from vacant land sales on your land. And then we rebuild your house, we then give a depreciation. And, and your house, so we're, we're trying to find out what it would have been if your house was new. Then you get depreciation. Then we're analyzing a like property, all of it in your neighborhood. And we adjust just the improvements up or down to what they're actually selling for. That's the small version of what mass appraisal is. So it doesn't matter if one person gets that money, but, or gets two hundred thousand. But if they all start getting two hundred thousand, that's when you see the increases. Because there's always outliers and there's always people who get great deals too.
Oh, yeah, I, I agree with that. So last year, there was a bill that was House Bill ninety-nine. Are you familiar with that one? That was the fair tax, uh, limit Chuck Gray brought that for?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Did you like that bill?
No, not when I was there, but we did not have, we did not, at that time, I did not know we were going up thirty-five percent. So I thought it was in the Trona County, Representative Gray is from the Trona County. I will be emailing him with more information on this bill and working with him along with other ones on the revenue committee.
Yeah.
So, yeah, if you're asking me, did I blow it there? Well, I just didn't think it was going that high. And the Trona County, again, with the three thousand appeals, they were so out of whack. I just didn't think the rest of the state would have to be dealing with that, you know, for their five percent increase and they were putting that on us. Now, yeah, if I could have done it in hindsight, yeah, I would have changed my mind. But after September, I was the first one to start looking at other states with limits on them. And so, yes, I've changed my mind, but I think that's allowed.
Yeah, and I know that we have spoken about this and I appreciate your candor about that.
Sure.
Um, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Yeah, Madam Chair, just a, a comment that we give back a mill and you said it was about eight hundred thousand dollars.
Yes.
I think we'd have to come up with some kind of formula because the richer properties would get a bigger discount than some of those that need it the most.
Well, that's true.
So.
Yeah. A million dollar house is worth a lot more discount.
They would take a large part of that, eight hundred mil, uh, eight hundred thousand, we're putting back.
But I think with the equal treatment situation, the way the constitution's written, we can't see that. It's across the board. If we drop to eleven mills, that one mill credit goes out the way it got built.
And you don't get that bill even on oil and gas production either. That lowers that value down quite a bit. So that's all considered in there, you know? And I mean, that, there's been two philosophies, you know? Oil and gas minerals, I mean, they're great, they help us, but when they're done, they're going to leave. So I think a lot of it in Wyoming, this is just an opinion, that we want to get the money they owe us before they run out for the state of Wyoming because it is our production. I think that's a mentality that we have and a lot of that is some of the reasons we don't lower mills too.
Well, I think the legislature came a long ways and, and fixing a little bit of that was some of the legislation last year with the way things are, the payments have changed and the tracking has changed.
We will see.
Yeah, we'll see if it works, but.
We will see if that works out.
Any other questions, comments? I know there's concerns, I'm not going to ask for concerns because we know there's concern. Anybody else? Okay. I guess we'll try to move forward in the best way we can if we can work with our legislators and, and whatever we can do. We'll take a look at the budgets that come in. Word of mouth is going to be a little bit of, of conversation out there as to what can or can't be done. I guess the understanding of the legalities of it. Um, and I know there's some ideas out there about the programs that are eligible.
Madam Chair, Pat, can I ask you, um, if we, if we drop the mill, and you don't have to tell me right now. If we drop the mill, how would that, how would that affect the, the homeowners in Park County?
And I can get, I can get, definitely get you that from the average, from the average house, you know? I can definitely let you know on that money on what that would do.
Okay, a three hundred thousand dollar house, what does that really look like per mill?
I could come up with that stuff for you on both lower average houses and high houses.
How much that would be? Yes, I can do that. Good information. Okay. Thank you.
Um, there is such a thing as half mills too, are those? Okay, just look at the whole picture. Okay. All right, uh, Madam Clerk?
Yes, to the gentleman, um, which gentleman he was, Dan. Um, so just so everybody knows, all of the special districts are listed on the county clerk's webpage. They all have to submit a budget by July one, or July thirty-first. And right now, all of the, they're prepping for the post, so we're getting a lot of those being posted. They're not final yet, they don't finalize until July thirty-first, so just for clarification.
Okay, thank you.
We have for special districts.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Without that.
Move to adjourn, Madam Chair.
I agree.
We've been seconded to adjourn the meeting for today. Any further discussion? Charles is in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.